All the meetings are just a regular meeting of the planning board at the town just from middle town. Through the open public meetings act and laws in 1975, the public has been notified that the planning board will meet on June 1st, 2016, 6:30 PM at Town Hall. The Biltown Planning Board notified the independent, the Starlet, and the Turner Times on December 4th, 2015. Notice of the meeting was filed at the town hall on September 3rd, posted at Town Hall on July 4th, 2015. All notifications given pursuant to the open public meetings act have these 48 hours prior to this meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Carroll?
Yes.
Yes. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Please rise to the floor.
United States of America, and to the father of our citizens, our nation, our God, and this world, with the ready and justice.
Can you use the mic, please?
The mic is in front of me.
New Business 2015-206, Village 35.
If you probably didn't hear, the first thing is all business Shore Builders, Inc. Okay. Any approval, motion for approval for the minutes of May 4th, 2016. All in favor? I salute. Approval of resolutions.
2009-412, Land Sale was approved for a longer extension of time. Motion, yes?
So moved.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cardell?
Yes.
Mr. Rattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Setebino?
Yes.
Mr. Shevius?
Yes.
Mr. Woben? 2009-212, Nettleview was also one year extension of time. Motion, yes?
So moved.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cardell?
Yes.
Mr. Rattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Setebino?
Yes.
Mr. Shevius?
Yes.
Mr. Woben? And 2012-403, 33, Van Hallow?
So moved.
That was an extension of time through December 1st, 2020.
They had asked for 2023, but because we went forward in five years, they needed to notice, they didn't notice, so we dated 2020 therefore no notice required under the MLU. Well, they had asked for five, basically they got them. And they had said they got four. So moved, don't be a denmer.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cardell?
Yes.
Mr. Rattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Setebino?
Yes.
Mr. Shevius?
Yes.
And Mr. Woben?
Okay, this isn't only meetings, this is public. Is there anything not on the agenda of the public would like to bring before us this evening? Okay. Okay, calls for made of motions.
Made of vouchers for today, June 1st, 2016. James Orvis, $1,000 for T and M Associates, $42,768. Yes. For T and M Associates, $42,768. And for a total number of vouchers for professionals, $42,768. Make a motion.
So moved. All in favor? I salute. The pick brings us to review of votes, 2016, 31, 68. 31, 68. Sam?
Yes, good evening, everybody. So, the township ordinance is in chapter 16, 16, 635, sets both standards for signage, overall signage for signage and signage for every zone within the township. There weren't any signage standards for the PD zone, so the township committee introduced the ordinance 16, 68, proposing amendments to the planning and draft regulations. And as required by the MLU, where the municipal entity draws or ordinance would refer, had to refer to the planning board to identify any inconsistencies with the purpose and intent of the township's master plan. So basically, what the MLU said is all of the provisions of such zoning ordinance or any amendment or revision shall either be substantially consistent with the land use plan element and the housing plan element or design to effectuate such plan elements. We took a look over our master plan and subsequent reexaminations, and we find no inconsistencies. It's, in fact, the 2014 master plan reexamination report states that updated signage standards are needed for future promotion and additional draft regulations in the PD zone. So, that's what we've found.
Questions or comments?
Yes. With respect to this proposed ordinance, I believe that we need to, as it's currently written, it has too much detail and specificity that really ties the hands of developers and architects. For instance, there's one section that talks about awnings. We shouldn't be really specifying the detail of what an awning consists of. I think specifying it consists of canvas or cloth is really beyond the scope of what this kind of ordinance should include. So, from this point of view, I think the level is too detailed, and we need to go back and revise that. I think it is not consistent with the master plan in terms of the principle of the master plan, it says we should simplify development standards and regulations. So I think what we need to do is rework this and come up with a higher level signage plan.
Aside from the awning, what are your issues?
Oh, besides that, there's other specificity with size and numbers and things like that that I think are just way too much detail for this kind of an ordinance.
Mark, can you give us another example, please?
Oh, yes, others. Let me look through it. There's some lettering sizes, materials, things like that.
Mark, give me a specific example, please.
Well, I had to look through it, there's...
Well, you're bringing up objection to the introduction, so I'm looking for specific examples that you cited.
Yeah, lettering height exceeds six inches, structure not to exceed 12 feet in height. Some of these things are just way too detailed.
I think the intent of detailing of the proposal is such that clarifies the position of the township with regard to signage and that there are no gray areas. The issue with regard to signage has been an issue in the township such that there has been gray areas or things that haven't been addressed in the past. I think this ordinance does a good job to address the specificity of those items, specific to some of the issues that have come up in the past. So, it would in fact cause fewer issues in the future, which is what they would, ordinance should do.
I think it's better left to the creativity of the developers and architects rather than the government trying to force certain specificity.
That's how you wind up the plan, square.
Right.
Having been, first of all, having been in 15 years in the signage business, the last thing you want to do is leave it up to creativity, I think is the word you used, of the developers and/or even the sign guys, because they're going to come up with something that, first of all, there's no consistency across town in that case. You decided height, well, if you don't have max and minimums on height, then it'll wind up with people coming down here looking to put up 90 or 100 foot signs, et cetera. It's, specificity is absolutely the right idea, because people, they want guidelines. They want to know a developer or somebody, an architect or a sign guy, they're looking for what are the rules? Thank you, and we fit into the rules.
What I think we could better approach would be to provide ranges and not necessarily detail in terms of the size of letters, the color of letters, or whatever. When you read through this, you see a lot of specificity that really is a hindrance.
To who?
To the developer.
Are you a developer?
Excuse me?
I mean, you've got to come down specifics and justify that. Tremendous amount of thought has gone into designing ordinance, and like I said, Kevin has also said, he takes out all of the ambiguity problems, which is the objective of any ordinance. Makes it easier.
I have a question. In the ordinance, are we still covering the use of electronic signs?
No, they're not.
At all?
The township, so the PD is adopted and on, just to tell you guys, if you've been involved in the county of which, I do not comment any kind of electronic signs.
But electronic signs that are now presently are grandparents?
There aren't any of them, every kind of those particular sites, I would need to...
Okay.
We're not, the board's, I mean, is to review the adequacy of the ordinance, right? We just, we want to review whether or not it's consistent with the master plan.
You're looking at the land use element and the housing element of the master plan and just saying, is this ordinance consistent with those elements? I need motion, Mr. Chairman, I need motion to, uh, to have this consistent with the master plan. I'll second.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Cardell?
Yes.
Mr. Rattrick?
Yes.
Mr. Setebino?
Yes.
Mr. Shevius?
Yes.
Mr. Woben?
Yes. That brings us to all business shore builders.
Ms. Carroll, please. Down, now, rise.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Charlie Kelly, Kelly Law, behalf of the applicant shore home builders. Before I recall, we were here in April, I believe, with a application and a plan to subdivide a currently non-conforming single-family lot on Seventh Avenue. The original plan had requested that certain relief and variances to create a three-lot subdivision. After we heard from members of the community and the board itself, a change was made to the plan so that it is now a two-lot subdivision. We're seeking one variance relating to the lot frontage on the rear lot of the hopefully subdivided property. And place down the east of the new plan, if you don't have it in front of you. With me is Rick Stockton, who was previously confirmed as an expert in professional land surveyor. He's here to basically provide the introduction and compare the old plan with the new plan so we're all working from the same space. After Rick Stockton, we have Andrew Stockton, who's a professional engineer, professional land surveyor, professional planner, who's here to address any of the engineering-related questions that came up at the last meeting, to the extent they are still relevant, given the change to the plan. And finally, we will present Christine Jafon, our professional planner, to provide testimony as to the positive and negative criteria of the new plan. So with that, I'd like to introduce Rick Stockton and ask that the board continue its recognition as a professional land surveyor.
Mr. Stockton swore it last time, so did he still?
Mrs. Stockton, if you could just describe for the board and the public the difference between the prior submission and the current submission.
The basic difference is, of course, we have removed the third lot, the center lot. We have now a two-lot subdivision. The lot fronting on Seventh Avenue, let me know, 02, is fully conforming in all aspects. We have only increased the size of that to approximately 15% of what had been made on the first lot. The second lot, Lot 11.03, contains 32,000 square feet, which is over three times what's required in the origin zone. The only variance that we are asking for relative to that lot is the 23.05 feet of frontage, where empty is required. The right angle distance between the two drivelines is slightly less than 23.05, 22.8 feet. The 12-foot driveway that's going to service the rear cottage house will be 5.4 feet of block of each boundary line on each side, so it will be conforming with the minimum of five feet of fabric to the driveway.
If anybody has questions for Rick Stockton, he's willing to answer them, but we do have Andrew Stockton, who's going to testify as to preparing engineers that were mentioned in the review letters.
One question, with regard to similar lots that have similar scenario for reduced frontage, can you point those out in the immediate area? I know that we had a conversation with regard to this at the last meeting.
I believe you're going to hear testimony to that effect from the planner?
That's fine, then I'll wait. Then I'll be happy to wait if that's coming up with the planner, thank you.
With that, I'd like to call Andrew Stockton.
My name is Andrew Stockton. This is Chris. Actually, I have two companies. My company is Eastern Civil Engineering LLC, 31 Grand Court, and I'm also the principal in charge of engineering services for each of these companies. It's due October 21st, 2016. Is there any more hints or testimony?
Mr. Stockton, can you please provide for the board some background of your education and experience?
Yes, for the board's benefit, I am licensed as a professional engineer, professional land surveyor, and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also licensed as a professional engineer and land surveyor in New York and Maryland, and as a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I've had my licenses in New Jersey since the early 1990s. And I've had my title of a business lawyer.
Oh, yeah, so. Mrs. Stockton, have you had a chance to review the review letters from the T and M and the township?
Planner, yes, I have.
If you, for the ease of facilitating the conversation, would you mind taking us through and addressing some of the issues that they had?
Sure. What is before the board tonight is a proposal for a two-lot subdivision. As my father mentioned, the existing lot area is for an existing lot, 11.01, is 48,350 square feet, and we're dividing that property into two new lots. New Lot 11.02 will have 15,291 square feet. New Lot 11.03 will have 32,429 square feet. New Lot 11.03 will have a general flag lot arrangement where it provides its driveway connection with safe and efficient access out to Seventh Avenue. New Lot 11.02 will have a direct driveway connection with safe and efficient access out to Seventh Avenue as well. The existing property is gently moderately sloping, where stormwater runoff drains basically from the south towards the north or towards the northeast. The front cap of the portion of the property, where the existing houses from that forward towards Seventh Avenue drains off towards Seventh Avenue and into an existing municipal drainage system there. The back cap, or back, two-thirds of the property drains off more towards the north and then off towards Prospect Street or Prospect Avenue and into the municipal drainage system there. Both of those drainage systems connect together and ultimately drain down to Menominee Creek, and Menominee Creek is approximately 1,250 or 1,300 feet north of the project site. The way that the proposed grading will work on the property won't change the existing drainage patterns at all, where the front lot, New Lot 11.2, stormwater runoff from that lot will continue to drain out to Seventh Avenue, and the rear lot, New Lot 11.03, stormwater runoff will continue to drain off towards the north. With regard to stormwater management, because of the runoff expected from the existing impervious areas on the property compared to the runoff from the proposed improvements, there's really only a small minor increase in stormwater runoff that we have to deal with. What we have contemplated and what I have in mind for this project is that we'll be able to install one or two stormwater seepage pits to collect the rooftop runoff and then recharge back to the ground, and that recharge effort will also provide stormwater attenuation to make sure that we don't increase runoff in any direction from anything that we're proposing to do when we do seismic improvements. With regard to utilities, each of the houses.
Sure, that's to address your summary, Rob, indoor letter on drainage.
I have to see the calculations, but that's clearly not the mitigation that, exactly, not the mitigation I expected to hear. So, once I receive the information and check it, assuming everything works out, then yes. And just to help, I have another confirmation there. I did start the process of that design for those seepage pits. I looked at the information from the Monmouth County Soil Survey, and I actually looked at some older project information, I think dating back to about 2005, site specific to this property, where soil test pits and soil permeability tests were actually done at that time that we can use for this design, and I can confirm that seepage pits are appropriate for the project and that they will.
Good.
With regard to utilities, there's existing sanitary sewer and existing water mains in Seventh Avenue will have new connections to each of the building lots. There's also existing, the overhead utilities for electric phone and cable TV. Those are pretty typical, and they have pre-service an existing gas line out there, too, so we'll have new gas services, pitches and many problems as well. With regard to Seventh Avenue, it's a paved roadway with concrete curb on either side and no existing sidewalk, and in fact, that whole neighborhood, Seventh Avenue, Prospect Down, and the rest of the neighborhood around, there are no sidewalks in that whole entire area. The only sidewalks exist along the northerly side of Hillside. So, one of our requests will be for a waiver from having to install any sidewalks along our norway frontage. I think from reviewing the planners' report, back in 2002, I think the waiver was also granted at that time, and I think there was a contribution made at that time specific to this property. Just mention that to the reference. Something I saw.
Wasn't it?
Yes, we said that in 2009, too. Then with application of the proposed to give the sidewalk installation, it was generally required on the street and on the country side.
Was the construction needed?
Sure, they did some homework.
Exactly, we need to do some homework to see. They're gonna get charged twice, but they have to pay once.
Then how would we just say that they would not pay them?
One other item that came up, and I think as well in the planner's review, we need a technical waiver for the installation of proposed street trees. There are existing trees that will remain on this property, and the ordinance allows for that requirement, that you don't have to care down the existing trees and plant the trees, so it's a technicality, a technicality that we got.
We've already mentioned, well, if any trees are after the definition, they will be replaced in kind of time to the issues of search and block. So, as long as they're existing, we don't have a problem. Should I come down and, and need to be, replacement of those?
And with regard to the remaining comments, in both the planner's and the engineer's review, those were very minor technical in nature with regard to adding certain notes and providing construction details.
I'm not really good at reading off the, uh, supervisor notes, but I have your card from the, uh, from the, uh...
Yes, yeah, we'll add that note, and actually all of the notes that were requested to be added as well. I mentioned, well, with regard to emergency access for the property, I did mention that the flag, uh, flagpole stem of the property, the proposed driveway, which provides safe and adequate access to Seventh Avenue.
And I'll be happy to wait if that's coming up with the planner, thank you.
All right. Would that like to call Andrew Stockton?
Mr. Stockton, can you please provide for us a background of your education and experience?
Yes, for the board's benefit, I am licensed as a professional engineer, professional land surveyor, and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also licensed as a professional engineer and land surveyor in New York and Maryland, and as a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I've had my licenses in New Jersey since the early 1990s.
Mr. Stockton, can you please provide for us a background of your education and experience?
Yes, for the board's benefit, I am licensed as a professional engineer, professional land surveyor, and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm also licensed as a professional engineer and land surveyor in New York and Maryland, and as a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. I've had my licenses in New Jersey since the early 1990s.
Mr. Stockton was...
And I have a title of this...
Oh, yeah, so.
Mr. Stockton, have you had a chance to review the review letter from the C and M and the county?
Planner, yes, I have.
If you, just for the ease of facilitating the conversation, would you mind taking us through and addressing some of the issues that they had?
Sure. What is before the board tonight is a proposal for a two-lot subdivision. As my father mentioned, the existing lot area is for an existing lot 11.01, it's 48,350 square feet, and we're dividing that property into two new lots. New lot 11.02 will have 15,291 square feet. New lot 11.03 will have 32,429 square feet. New lot 11.03 will have a general flaglot arrangement where it provides its driveway connection with safe and efficient access out to 7th Avenue. New lot 11.02 will have a direct driveway connection with safe and efficient access out to 7th Avenue as well. The existing property is gently moderately sloping where stormwater runoff drains basically from the south towards the north or towards the northeast. The front cap of the portion of the property with the existing houses from that forward towards 7th Avenue drains off towards 7th Avenue and into an existing municipal drainage system there. The back cap, or back to two-thirds of the property drains off more towards the north and then off towards Prospect Street or Prospect Avenue and into the municipal drainage system there. Both of those drainage systems connect together and ultimately drain down to Menominee Creek, and Menominee Creek is approximately 1,250 or 1,300 feet north of the project site. The way that the proposed grading will work on the property won't change the existing drainage patterns at all, where the front lot, new lot 11.02, stormwater runoff from that lot will continue to drain out to 7th Avenue, and the rear lot, new lot 11.03, stormwater runoff will continue to drain off towards the north. With regard to stormwater management, because of the runoff expected from the existing impervious areas on the property compared to the runoff from the proposed improvements, there's really only a small minor increase in stormwater runoff that we have to deal with. What we have contemplated and what I have in mind for this project is that we'll be able to install one or two stormwater seepage pits to collect the rooftop runoff and then recharge back to the ground, and that recharge effort will also provide stormwater attenuation to make sure that we don't increase runoff in any direction from anything that we're proposing to do when we do the same improvements. With regard to utilities, each of the houses...
Sure. That address your Senator Robb, indoor letter on drainage...
I have to see the calculations, but that's certainly not the mitigation that, exactly, not the mitigation I expected to hear. So, once I receive the information and check it, assuming everything works out, then yes.
Okay.
And just to help, I have another comment there. I did start the process of that design for those seepage pits. I looked at the information from the Monmouth County Soil Survey, and I actually looked at some older project information, I think dating back to about 2005, site specific to this property where soil test pits and soil permeability tests were actually done at that time that we can use for this design, and I can confirm that seepage pits are appropriate for the project and that they look good. With regard to utilities, there's existing sanitary sewer and existing water mains in 7th Avenue will have new connections to each of the building lots. There's also existing, the overhead utilities for electric phone and cable TV. Those are pretty typical. And then I'm pretty sure there's an existing gas line out there too, so we'll have new gas services to make the runs as well. With regard to 7th Avenue, it's a paved roadway with concrete curb on either side and no existing sidewalk, and in fact, that whole neighborhood, 7th Avenue, Prospect, Town, and the rest of the neighborhood around, there are no sidewalks in that whole entire area. The only sidewalks exist along the northerly side of Hillside. So, one of our requests will be for a waiver from having to install any sidewalks along our roadway frontage. I think from reviewing the planner's report, back in 2002, I think a waiver was also granted at that time, and I think there was a contribution made at that time specific to this property. Just mention that to the...
Wasn't it?
Yes, I said that in 2009, too. Then with application of the proposed to give the sidewalk installation, it was generally required a foundation and sidewalk last month.
Was the foundation usually needed?
Sure, they did some homework.
Exactly, we need to do some homework to see. But I could get charged twice, but pay once.
Then how would we just say that we will not pay them?
One other item that came up, and I think as well in the planner's review, we need a technical waiver for the installation of proposed street trees. There are existing trees that will remain on this property, and the ordinance allows for that requirement, that you don't have to care now the existing trees and plant the trees. So, it's a technicality, a technical waiver for that.
You mentioned that any trees are possibly deficient after construction, that they will be replaced in kind of via to the issues of such a little bump in here. So, as long as they're remaining, what's existing, we don't have a problem. Should I even come down and need to be petitioned or...
We understand. And with regard to the remaining comments, in both the planner's and the engineer's review, those were very minor technical in nature with regard to adding certain notes and providing construction details.
I have your card from the...
Yes, yeah, we'll add that note, and actually all of the notes that were requested to be added as well. I mentioned, with regard to emergency access for the property, I did mention that the flag, flagpole stem of the property, the proposed driveway, which provides safe and adequate access to 7th Avenue.
Is that sufficient access for fire?
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Sorry, that's it?
That's it.
Any word for the public?
Sign up for the review, the project was paid back in 2003.
There you go.
It's just it for Mr. ...
I did hear one question, and I do have some information with regard to other properties in the surrounding area that might have insufficient coverage.
Well, a little bit about that maybe, because if you have personal knowledge, would you like to ask Mr. Stockton about that as well? We do have a supplemental, we'll all suggest that.
Certainly, the question is specific to similar flaglots, not necessarily insufficient frontage lots, which are two different items.
Just immediate block right next door, right across Hillside Avenue, block 712, there are at least three and probably four flaglots on that roadway with frontage that varies in width from, or for example, it looks like the width is about 20 feet, and one of them the width is about 35. There are also a handful, probably, seven or eight properties that have actually no frontage at all on any approved street in that lot. You're referring to a document? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm referring to copies of the municipal tax map, Sheet 64, which shows our subject property, Sheet 65, which shows the block. And we can, we can watch that. There will be, we'll be back to see what we want to work.
Do you have lot numbers on those that you just called out?
I do, I just might need to find them. Block 712, it looks like Lot 48 is a flaglot, Lot 10 is a flaglot, Lot, I'll read that right, it's either 18 or 16, I think it's 18, is a flaglot, and Lot 32 has access through a 20-foot wide easement out to Monmouth Avenue. And then Lots 2, 5, 6, 9, and 12 look like those don't have any content at all on any lots.
We have no idea what you're talking about. All we've got is this, there's doesn't even show the lots, the last of the lots, and there's no Lot 712 on here. Assuming you must be talking about stuff on the opposite side of Hillside Avenue.
And, that's exactly where I'm talking.
Not one in any fashion. This is your document. This document that you just referred to is not marked last time, because as I started to talk about it, your submissions asked who prepared it. So, although this document was submitted, it's not yet over the period.
I would say that's, that's going to be a fairly pivotal question with regard to this application and the relief that you're seeking, right?
Well, I think, I think you're correct. I think it relative to the testimony and relief that we're seeking, I couldn't or ask that these two maps should mark. I'm not sure what...
But frankly, my notes reflect it, nothing got marked last time, because it was just the submitted documents, which the board typically doesn't mark with exhibit number on it. So, this would be A1 and A2. Now, is that the only copy of those documents that you have?
Actually, that is the only copy I wrote, yes.
Well, I think that, just to suggest, the lots that you identified on there, at least take a pen and try to, so if it'll be handed out to the board...
And I did, I had, I did mark it.
They're highlighted on B1 and A2. If I might, do you, I mean, sometimes lots show on a tax map, but that doesn't mean that they're not combined with other lots for either purpose of use, purpose of taxation. Sometimes you have a rear lot and a front lot, so to identify lots in the back as being either landlot or flaglot, without knowing whether the, their common ownership with the front lot or side lot or something else, it'd be somewhat misleading.
My intention wasn't to mislead, but we're all in that regard, and I did say generally it looks like there are a certain number of lots that exist at that point.
But I'm saying, if you identify some landlot lots, there are lots in front of those landlot lots, but you don't get their common ownership...
I didn't explore the...
So, I mean, you know what the tax map, you're going to see lots, lots that look like they're, they can be developed, but if you move deeper into the deeds and into the tax records themselves, you're going to see that they're owned by the same people who own the lot in front of them.
I was just trying to answer the board members' question.
Well, I think what Mr. Gorman is mentioning is although we appreciate the information, thank you for that, the extent of the information that you can gather from a tax map doesn't provide the information that would fully answer the question. Similarly, and an extension of that question would be, can you comment with regard to the improvements on those lots, such to Mr. Gorman's point, that if they're approved lots, they may be improved in combination with other adjacent lots, so that it would be able to answer my question with regard to similar flaglots in the vicinity?
Right. The only one without having a specific aerial map or image to look at, the only one that I can comment on with specificity is right at the bend in Grand Avenue, there is a house with a driveway along stem.
No, I get, well, the intent of my question, whenever there's, whenever there's relief requested, the intent of the question is to, is to see if there are others similar lots in the area that are already in existence, that the generation of this new lot would be similar to other adjacent lots, right? So, so far, you really haven't answered my question just yet, and I understand, I don't know that you were prepared to, potentially the planner may be able to answer that better.
And your question might actually get answered if you see the highlighted portions of the incident.
Sure, I get it, but I'll go back to Mr. Gorman's comment as to the content of the answer, right?
Since those have been marked, I would suggest it's the only copy you can pass them off to the board to see at least what is identified, what's marked.
I guess at this point it'd be prudent to mark the resubmitted site plan as P3 or A3?
Sure. If you want to hand that one in, typically we don't mark the filed decisions, but that's been on file with the board, right? So, if you want to mark it as D3, fine. It'll also help, because we know, what are the dots all about?
Those were just to help me read the lot numbers off. The dots were the highlighted marks on the actual lot numbers.
So, but that doesn't tell us that this is what are, or maybe possibly, flaglots or landlot lots.
Right, but that exploring the ownership of each of those, it does show lot lines that are in the lot, or lot lines that have access by an apparent flaglot.
I'm looking at the lot, is this the same as...
That's not the same document that just got marked. The one that has the blue and the brown on it was a document that was, was out and about to be introduced last time, it was not introduced, so that's still not in the folder. It's in the application, they piled it, but it's not something that's been through the board. Preparation of that, or went into the questions about it, the board never got there.
Well, I think the intent of Mr. Stockton's testimony has been achieved with regard to this particular lot, this bonus testimony that can probably be elaborated on a little more with Mr. Bone, unless the board has any further questions of Mr. Stockton.
Okay, questions?
I just want to get back to the driveway for a moment. 23.05 feet wide is the entrance, and yet, it might clear that 18 feet to be gravelled?
No, that was on an older version of the plan. It's meant to be a 12-foot wide A driveway now.
It's gone down to 12?
Yes.
So, the difference between that and the width of the entrance will be on either side of that, and that's a given, that that's an assumption, my assumption, that that would be down the center. What would be left or right?
We are, that's, that's our assumption as well, that the new driveway will be put down the center of that flagpole stem, 12 feet wide, it leads 5.4 feet to the north and 5.3 feet to the south, where a request was made in the past to make sure that we maintain 5 feet minimum.
Would there be planting, potentially? Could that happen in the future?
There was actually a request or a requirement in the planner's review to provide, I think, 11 new trees, and, you know, we will provide those, and if the board requests that we, you know, scatter some of them along the stem, driveway stem, we can certainly do that.
So, my question would then be, Charlie John over here, that's okay still with emergency vehicles getting down there?
The tree planting wouldn't happen anywhere that would conflict his alignment on the driveway, it would be clear.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call Christine Bone.
Your first name and address? Christine A. Zaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Bone, E-R-O-A-N-E. Business address is 125 Gas Mile Road, Suite 200, residential, Georgia.
I believe Ms. Bone's been previously just...
Thank you.
Ms. Bone, I guess, to start, could you just give your spiel?
Sure, thank you for accepting my credentials. This has been a very cleaned up application from last month, as you heard, we eliminated one lot, and the only variance relief that we're now seeking is for the lot frontage of 23.05, where 100 feet is required. But what I think, just to set the tone and some of the parameters for this application, in your planner's May 24, 2016 review of this application, she characterizes the property as the lone non-conforming lot for non-conforming use in the area, and I think that's very relevant here. On page 2 of 6 of her letter, she indicates the subject property appears to represent the lone non-conforming use in the immediate area. So, what's on the subject property today, as we sit here, is a three, a three-unit dwelling and then a one-unit cottage. So, as it also pointed out in her letter, this is a four-dwelling unit on this single lot, that's in the paragraph before the one indicating it was a lone non-conforming lot in the immediate area. Both of those are on page 2 of 6 of your planner's May 24, 2016 review letter. So, I think, I heard a lot of the testimony this evening, or a lot of questions and the discussions about, are there any other flaglots in the immediate area? In the immediate area within 200 feet of this property, there are not. In the Hillside section, and this is on 7, on 7th Street, of course, in the Hillside section of Hilltown, 7th Avenue, not the Leenaro or Belver 7th Avenue. So, in Hillside, are there other flaglots? Yes, there are. There are, next to what we all know as the Red Store on Monmouth, there are two lots over there that are flaglots, and they're developed. As far as there being any other landlot parcels in this immediate area, I'm not sure the relevance of that, because we're not asking to create any landlot parcels, we're asking to create only one additional lot with a flag from frontage, and while that might not be the dominant character over Hillside, it certainly exists. In addition to that, off of serpentine, there is a prior tribe that two residential homes are accessed law-able. So, again, I think what's important to review, and if we were dealing with a blank piece of property tonight, then I would say, we probably didn't have a great case to come and ask you to create a flaglot, if we weren't creating any planning benefits. The law clearly favors the elimination of non-conforming uses. This property is set in the town's R10 zone, which does not allow multifamily uses, nor does it allow two-family uses on one lot. So, certainly, with the elimination of the non-conforming uses, and with the elimination of the residential cottage, and the development of this property with two conforming residential homes in the area, I think that the board can use that as a balancing act. In planning, when you're dealing with a random variance, there has to be a balancing. When we get to the negative criteria, and I talk about the benefit outweighing the detriment, the land use law does not ask to hold this or any other applicants to defer that there be absolutely unexhaustible, just that the benefits outweigh the detriment. And here, I think this is a very compelling benefit, because it is, as your planner points out, the lone non-conforming use in the area, which will be eliminated. So, I think, certainly in my opinion, the board can grant this flaglot, it's not, Mr. Senator, it's not the dominant lot pattern in the area. I would never have come tonight and tried to bring a map that pulls in flaglots that are 1,000 feet from our property, because I heard this, I've been here before this before, when you have criticized us as an applicant for bringing two lots that aren't in the 200 feet. So, that's why we didn't bring that forward tonight, because we've been chastised for that in the past. I think that that was a great idea, because I didn't think you would find that all that compelling, say, hey, maybe not on 7th Avenue or in Hillside, but sure, along Monmouth Street, does this exist? Yes, it does, and I'm sure our fire official and all of them, who know that they exist there, there are homes, all of these type of properties in Hillside. Are there a lot of them? Probably not, because there's not a lot of three-unit homes either with a cottage on them, a lot that are 45,000 square feet, which are more than four times the minimum area of the zone. So, in fairness to this applicant, it's not as if there's a lot of those type of properties either. So, what we are looking at, I did come last month, one of my associates came, who was down waiting tables in Rich Bone's, I heard he does a pretty rough on them, so, he's down in Port Rico in Cooper, Texas. I don't know, that's not much. Anyway, we, the applicant listened, we really tried to listen, and come back with a plan that we think was reasonable with respect to the area, and where the rooms are 1,600 and 1,800 square foot footprints, so they're not out of character with the area. I think the board can rely on the purposes of the land use law, criteria E, talks about setting forth appropriate population densities, this is a reduction to the amount of units that are on this property, and I think you can rely on criteria A, which talks about promoting the general welfare, because you're eliminating a non-conforming use in the R10 zoning district. I think as far as the negative criteria, you heard Mr. Stockton's original testimony, the flaglot, while having only 23.05 feet of frontage, is over three times the minimum required lot area. So, we've got one other bulk variance, and the other lot, 11.03, is completely conforming, or 11.02 is completely conforming, we need no variances for that one. So, I think we came back to the board with a pretty clean application. We heard your comments last night, I think you can certainly move this application and conclude that it advances criteria E of the land use law, criteria A of the land use law, and I also think you can use criteria G, which talks about providing sufficient space in appropriate locations. In a zone that you have a lot, that is 25,971 square feet, in a zone that allows 10,000 square foot lot, we are asking for two lots. So, I think you could certainly conclude that there is sufficient space, and this is in appropriate location for this single family residential use, perhaps not to use it on the property, which is non-conforming. And I think the negative criteria talks about substantial detriment to the public good. Last month, I know the board had some concern as far as drainage, you heard our engineer testify tonight, this property or project will not change the drainage patterns in the area. He's direct, uncontested testimony that the project will not change the drainage patterns in the area. You've also heard that we can get safe and efficient circulation up that, up that driveway to that dwelling. So, I think as far as the negative criteria, I don't see any substantial detriment, given the fact that there will be safe and efficient access, there will be no adverse drainage impact, and the density is completely consistent and less than what was envisioned by the R10 zone. So, I believe that the board can certainly move the grant of the variance, and the statutory burden of proof has been satisfied.
I appreciate the fact that the application has moved in a, in a good direction, and I think that the, I think that the size of the lot is, is best developed as something... is best developed as something of less than three, but more than one. And I don't know, based on the geography of the site, I don't know that frankly, there's any other way to achieve something that's more than one and less than three.
Without that.
Right, to develop the site. So, and I know I'll probably hear this for months to come, but I'll tend to agree with your position.
I'm not going down, and Mr. Settefrio, you don't agree with me? June first, February the fourth is due.
So, you know, the question with regards to the flag lot, we want to make certain that we're not creating lots that are not consistent with other similar lots, not that that's the prevailing lot type, but that there are other lots in the area based on the development of that area. So I'm comfortable, Mr. Chairman, with the testimony at the moment and the revised application.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Can you mark on the paper? Yes. Is this board's questions or comments? You're done. Okay, then this is questions and more comments. Danny's looking on everything. You were scoring in person, so did you just get your name on the record, please?
At least, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, I'll start with, I'll start with this. I'm sorry, I don't remember her name. Christine Zaro. She seems to raise the points that back in 2006, the letters that were from the planner actually come out that it was just the lone flag lot in the area. But there was a lot else that happened in 2006 and '07, when this was brought to the zoning board. And the letter actually, and I'll paraphrase, because I don't know if the attorney agent has sent to evidence, but I know you all have this information, is that it's completely inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood. It is out of character to having a flag lot in this particular area, and that the flag lot basically in essence would create having a house in between the backyards of all the surrounding adjoining property owners.
What, I'm sorry, what non-conforming is being referred?
This is the decision letter. I'm sorry, I should have backed up with that. So this was the denial letter when the application was heard, dated April 23, 2007, is the resolution. At the time, the same game that was played here tonight is the same game that was tried then. It was originally brought with two houses to be behind the big house, and then they realized there were some issues and concerns with there being two houses. So after the review was done, they resubmitted the application with only one house. And miraculously, everyone thought, oh, so now we'll just have one instead of two in the back. It was still denied for these reasons. The difference in this case is that they want to now get rid of the non-conforming use and replace it with a single-family home. Mr. Settefrio, all due respect, your point was, how do I get more than one and less than three? And so the answer came out to be two. There could be one. There is easily an answer that this can be torn down if they want to get rid of the non-conforming use. Have one house on a big, beautiful piece of property, which we would all love to have, so that we could enjoy our playgrounds and pools and everything else that somebody wants to have in their backyard. And currently, that backyard butts up against the back of my backyard, which is seven, here, seven point oh two. So to the detriment part, you seem to think there are no detriments and no effects. When I look at my back fence right now, I see space, light, and there's air. There's no noise, there's no traffic, there's no driveway, which is really going to be the size of a road to be able to allow the fire trucks that you said can get through there. That road will butt up behind our area. I expected when I bought my home that the township would support the zoning rules, and the way that they were then, when I bought the home in 2003, the way they were when the zoning board denied a similar situation because of having a second house in the back of it, that was denied for the same reasons. And those zoning rules apply today. This twenty-three-foot variance that they're requesting, by the way, it's not twenty-three feet of frontage. Oh, I'm squished onto the street? No, the twenty-three feet is a road being built so that builders can make more money by putting a house in the back of another house. That is the economic benefit to them. There is no benefit to us, no benefit to the neighborhood. Big detriment as far as the runoff. Seven point oh two, you can see where that runoff's going. It's going to go in my backyard. Do you think after standing, my backyard wasn't a flood already? Do you think that that hasn't changed? You're relying on 2006 information? 2006 information? I'll go back to 2002. In 2002, the application by Mr. Mim, the owner at the time, said specifically he wanted a lot line adjustment to separate what was a big piece of property for two. Do you know what it says on that application? It says specifically, no new construction will result. I was here two months ago, and you said that exact point to the other applicants that were here, sir, and I was very struck by that. They came in and they said, oh, well, divide it into two lots, which happened to be like this. And the board said, okay, no new construction will result. Just because it's thirteen years later, we still live there. It is not appropriate to put a house in the middle of our yards, taking away the expectation that we all had in compliance with the master plan of the town, the land use rules of the town, the idea that we should have room for space. I just saw Mayor Sharpenberger have the whole ceremony and a whole thing about having open space in the town. This is not development for good reason. This may or may not be development for only the benefit of the builders. And nobody is asking to have a house stuck behind this other house. So I thank you very much for my comments.
Well, in 2006, the application was before the zoning code of adjustment. This is a non-conforming use, it's a three-family house. The 2007 summary, summarizing what it involved. The application fell under zoning code restriction because it involved expansion of the non-conforming use, which is the three-family house, the single-family zone. So the applicant intended to reclaim their existing three-family house and also reduce the size of the lot by creating another, like, flag lot for the three-family and the single-family lot. That's what was, that was what the application was. Then, so, you know, the zoning board at that time found that in case of a D1 variance or a D2, expansion of the conforming use, you have to have either hardship or what, you have to put on decades standards as to why that variance needs to be granted, because it's, to do that subdivision is not by right, because it goes before the zoning code of adjustment. And the zoning code of adjustment is completely different than you guys. The planning board found that neither criteria was satisfied. So they didn't satisfy the positive criteria as well as the negative criteria. And that they didn't find that there was any hardship for that, and that was the reason why it was denied.
So it was denied based on the point that they were maintaining a non-conforming lot, reducing the size of the lot and then subdividing it and adding additional?
That is correct. And okay, this is, and just so that everyone understands, and the final decision is yours. Currently, there is one cottage and a three-family home. Should the board deny this application? Because it's a non-conforming use that's been in existence, we can, it will continue the non-conforming use. You know, so that's, that's persuaded. And what they're proposing to do, what's different in this application is that they're proposing to subdivide it. They require a lot, hundred variance. The county testifies, up to the board to decide. But the difference here is that they are making it conforming and having instead two single-family homes. So as it stands today, it's a four-family, a one cottage and a three-family home. And with this, it would be two single-family homes. The variance that it results in is a non-conforming variance. Now, should the planner's testimony satisfy a positive or negative criteria as per the board, then you make a decision based on that.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask more? Someone show me, everyone, where the dwelling currently sits and where the cottage sits on the property?
Sure.
It sits in the middle of the two proposed.
Right, so we're going to the court with evidence?
You're not going to get picked up in there, so.
So referring to A3 and evidence to answer Board Member Perry's question. The existing three-story multifamily dwelling sits essentially in the center of the front portion of the property. The one-story cottage sits directly to the west or the rear of it. You're welcome.
Yes, one other question? Just to bring this up. Last time we were here, 2007, I recall that there was a big discussion around the non-conforming use itself. Two of the three apartments did not have COs. There was no CO for the cottage. There was supposed to be nobody living in it. We were told at the end of that meeting that nobody lived in the cottage, that there was no CO for that cottage, period. I haven't looked at this independently, but I don't, I assume that you all have, that what is the status of the non-conforming structure that's there? Because now they're saying there's actually three families in the house and one family in this cottage. The cottage is a shack, by the way, and I don't know if anyone's looked at this, but I'm just not, I don't know what happened during the sale to actually allow that to happen and keep the COs in the first place, because my understanding was that they were coordinating systems.
The cottage is not occupied right now, but it certainly could be cleaned up and occupied. All of these systems that would be required, the bathroom, the plumbing, the kitchen are intact, and there has been no intervening use or overt act to intend to abandon that cottage. So if you go in, it's not particularly clean, but the systems, the kitchen, the bathroom, those facilities are all there. And there has been no intervening use since when it was used as a residential use. So while not occupied today, it would be my opinion that the applicant could certainly clean it up and get a CO on that property.
Those physical buildings, those physical buildings, I looked at, really quack run down, almost to the point of pure demolition.
There are tenants in the front building, though.
But there are not four families, there are three families potentially. And the three-family, I know the density of the property is not an issue here because of the size of the space, but the three families living in a one structure, we all know, has a lot less people and cars and everything associated with adding a second house. So again, I would say, tearing it down and adding one-family house is a legitimate option, and it's not that out of character. When you look at, like, to your point about the lot, several of these lots are actually joined, and they're three lots altogether. And there are some several large pieces of property that are owned and lived on currently in that area that are not as out of line as they would like to have them think.
So could you just repeat that last statement, please, with regard to the lots that are not as out of line as you would think?
Yeah, so the, like, where I live here, seven point oh two, it looks like there's this little seven point oh one right next to me, but that's not the case. Seven point oh one and six and the one next to it, that's all one person's home. They actually came before this board as a hundred and forty-five feet wide.
That was our specific comment with regard to the testimony offered, only to the taxman, to Mr. Gorham's point, that the taxman didn't reveal whether it was one owner or multiple owners and the improvements on those properties. So that, thank you.
Anyone else in the board? Yes, sir.
Robert, 253 Hillside Avenue, I am behind them. DYD.
Could you locate your property on that, on the map behind you, please?
Seven oh seven. Looks like to the far. I believe you are to the northwest. On the big ones, you are the old backside there.
Yes.
There you are, right?
Yes.
We've got a tasking up here.
Please raise your hand for testimony about your board's proposal.
I would like to also read from one of my neighbors. Sorry?
Robert.
I'd like to read my neighbor's at 257 Hillside Avenue, who cannot be here. Is that allowed?
Okay, I'll figure that out. He goes, we can't question.
Right, then, you can't make that statement forth. You can make any statements you want in your home behavior. You can't say they say.
I do.
You can say whatever you want, however you feel. You can't say it's somebody else's thoughts, feelings, whatever, because they're not there before it's happened by the applicant, if they so choose to.
Well, I would like to go on record saying that I'm opposed to any multi-home development at the above site, whether it is three or even two homes. As one home will be landlocked and concerned for my property values, the lot reflects most of, our lot, my lot, reflects most of the large lots in the area. And I would like to continue to limit the area to one-family apartment. I understand that it is a existing three-family home right now. But I do not find the development, this development in keeping with the neighborhood and just Middletown in general. This is a general neighborhood, a nice neighborhood, and I would like to keep it that way. I would also like to say that I am concerned for the fire trucks getting into the area and just the general development of one road for just one additional house. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the public? Have you picked a motion to close the public portion?
Gordon, I have a request for the applicant. There's been some discussion tonight with regard to, again, flag lots. And I know the planner has commented that there are some other flag lots within at least a two-hundred-foot radius. But the documents we've provided from the last application are not specific to those lots. And I, based on Mr. Gorham's comment, I'm going to discredit a bit of the testimony that was only limited to the tax map, because multiple tax lots can be owned by one owner and improved across those tax lines. And that doesn't necessarily answer the question with regard to similar flag lots within a two-hundred-foot radius. So I think I might need some more information, and I'm going to make a request deal. And it's up to you whether or not you want to proceed in that request, where the board, of course, can vote tonight. Need some more information specific to flag lots that have been in two-hundred-foot zone, their conformance with the ordinance and in keeping with the master plan. I'm missing that piece of information. And it would be difficult for me to render a decision without seeing that. So that's my offering to you. You can obviously select, proceed as you wish, but I'd like to see that additional piece of information.
I just want to make sure I understand your request, Mr. Settefrio, because I think we were talking about apples and oranges and pork, and the landlocked parcels being pardoned. I don't think the board should be considering that, because we're not asking to create any landlocked parcels.
Correct, this is specific.
Right, with respect to the flag lot, the reason we didn't, I didn't produce that exhibit, there aren't any flag lots immediately within what you would consider a two-hundred-foot radius here.
How far away?
You'd probably have to go out, I don't know, maybe two thousand. You'd probably have to go out, I don't know, maybe 1,000 feet roughly along Hockwood Avenue. You're over by the Red Store. There's one about three lots down from the Red Store, which is why I said to you in my testimony, they're not the dominant lot pattern.
Sure, sure, I get that. Could I, let me ask you a specific question, and if you're saying to me that flag lots are north of an 800-foot radius from the property, would you consider those flag lots to be within this neighborhood, or would you attribute it to another neighborhood?
They're in Hillside, they're in what I would consider a Hillside section of Middletown, so to the extent they're through this neighborhood. But like I said to you, I've been before this board countless times, and this board has never been persuaded, particularly by bringing an exhibit that shows lots that are out of the 200-foot radius.
Well, no, no, well, I get that, but what I'm saying is, and the reason why I asked you with regard to kind of whether it's within this neighborhood or another neighborhood, is if there are flag lots, if they're outside of 200 feet, outside of something you may consider this neighborhood or another neighborhood, maybe the flag lot is then not indicative of what's here, or there aren't similar, there aren't similar examples within this neighborhood. So that's, that's to my point.
You're not going to find a zone, for example, of what's going on in this neighborhood, and that's why in land use, there is a fundamental principle that each case needs to rise and fall on its own merits. So just hear me out on this. If somebody were to come back to you next month and say, "We have a 55,000 square foot lot, and because you created that flag lot over on 7th Avenue on our property that has a tiny little single-family home, and you want to subdivide it and create a flag lot," I would say those are two very different cases, and I don't think you should be persuaded by that. Here, in the instance application, again, which is why each case has to rise and fall on its own merits, you're eliminating some pretty substantial nonconformities. The characterization by some of the public that this lot is in conformance with the master plan, to me, is categorically untrue. There's nothing about this property that's conforming, not in respect to the use. The structures are dilapidated, as Mr. Rastin indicated, so I just, I mean, if you're looking for us to come back with a red herring that shows flag lots in the area next month, the applicant's not going to be able to enjoy it, because they don't exist on 7th Avenue. Can we find some exhibits that show you a combination of flag lots and private drives in the Hillside area? We can definitely do that, because we've looked at them on Google Earth. So it's a matter of coming back next month with a Google aerial that says, "Not immediately within 200 feet, but look, here's a handful of flag lots and private drives on Serpentine that serve more than one." We can do that, and we'll come back and we'll show you the exhibit next month. But you're going to look at it, and I think you have enough information to vote on this application tonight. That's my opinion.
Again, that's my request, that's a single word, however used the applicant, so you can select and proceed how you wish to your application, and that's only my view.
I would like to add that I agree with Mr. Settler Reno that we need more information. There's a whole picture here that you need to save, and it's not before, but also say that concerning that particular property question made up of three lots, it's not so much that the property is not conforming, it's the structure right now, the existing structure, right, the existing structure. So I can't accept about my statement that you said necessarily that our problem is with the lot not in conformance, it's the structure right now.
The use of the property is not performing.
The use of it, correct, that applies to the structure, not the property itself. So I do have to give the same report here, so to speak, with Mr. Settler Reno, and I need more information, and I need privacy, so that's my commentary.
One thing that you mentioned, Christine, a few minutes ago, was that if we granted this, and somebody came in, I think they said 55,000 square feet, and a small house, it wouldn't be the same.
No, wouldn't.
Yes, it would.
I don't think so.
Exactly, exactly the same thing, and you would come in here and argue that, and you would be witness for that. We've seen it over and over and over again, and one of the things the planning board has to be careful of is setting a precedent somewhere. This would set a precedent in this neighborhood, and that's what this whole board I believe is wrestling with at this point in time, because if you're down on Mama's with those display lots, that's a quarter mile away. That's not the same neighborhood.
But you're looking at it with blinders on, as if you have a vacant piece of property here, and you don't. The elimination of a nonconforming use in a zone is a substantial benefit. The law substantially does not want nonconforming uses to continue. So if you had, I couldn't disagree with you more in that the example that I gave would be the same thing. Without the elimination of the nonconforming use, this becomes a very different case, a very, very different case. So respectfully, it is so.
Christine, here, trying to decide about subdivision of lots.
Which eliminates.
But that's just incidental, that it happens to be eliminating a nonconforming and I would suspect an illegitimate use of the property. And so by the heck, enforcement hasn't shut it down before. I have no idea. We're not in enforcement school, but that's what this board is wrestling with.
You know, part of my struggle is that the existing, that the existing lot is well in access of what you need to, for minimum lot size, for two lots, and I get that. So just as an individual member, I'm trying to balance the fact that, and again, it did move from three, which I thought was way too many, to two. Can you always develop as one lot and not appear before the boards, you don't need anything? Of course you can, and I get that. But as a member, I'm trying to balance the fact that you have, but for the flag lot, you would have two conforming lots, but the key question is going to be, we don't want to create anything that is wholly dissimilar to what's in the neighborhood, but I want to balance the rights of the applicant based on what's, what the lot offers, so that's where I'm at.
I understand, I think at this time it would probably be better for us to then produce this exhibit, you can look at it and evaluate the application at that time. Harry, please.
We're now moving to Village 35, 30 feet. We all need to act of order. Thank you. All right. We are at 2015, 206 Village 35.
For the record, Mark, before we cash out to the applicant, we have provided legal notice for this application. We have a full roster of witnesses at the end, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce our first witness, Paul Phillips, to sort of set the stage for the evening's presentation.
Before Mr. Phillips, let me just mark the notice. Here's your notice. See, I just want to state that they were overly cautious about serving, so that they served not only within 200 feet of the subject property, but 200 feet of a lot of the other properties. So properties that are not included in the development application were included in their requests or notice lists. There were quite a few other properties that got noticed. It's okay to notice more, so the notice is fine, it's acceptable, the notice in the store ledger is acceptable, the board has jurisdiction. The same, so there are quite a few in there, and we don't have to go through each block and lot, but they, out of an abundance of caution, they noticed, for example, on the properties within 200 feet of the other side, like the Stop and Jump property, and from the township property that's called Bicentennial Park. They included that request in the assessor's office, and the assessor made a list based on 200 feet from that property. The list was overly extensive, but they're trying to be cautious to make sure they noticed everybody.
She's taking names for the record.
Paul Phillips.
This morning. We're definitely going to work through, we're going to push something out.
I do.
And your gradual pleas, Mr. Phillips, aboard, huh?
Yes, my name is Paul Phillips. I am a principal in the firm of Phillips, Price, Gray Gill, highest professional planner. I've appeared on a number of occasions before this board and have been accepted before this board in that capacity.
Board accepts. You can never be, this is a testimony, here, there's, I believe it was a misleading story in Esber Park Press, and I want to be sure everybody understands that here. The Esber Park Press story may have seemed like the board was going to make a recent decision this evening. There's no way in heck we're going to hear all the testimony on this application this evening, so, but there will not be a decision by this board on this application this evening.
Short presentation you'd like to make, if that's reasonable?
Yes, quite a brief presentation. So what I thought I would do to essentially frame for the planning board and the public sort of why we are here this evening and give a brief overview with regard to approvals related to this particular property. And first, the applicant did obtain a general production plan, or GDP approval, from this board back in July of last year, in connection with the property, which again is located along Route 35 between Kings Highway and Kane's Lane. The overall tract, again, to refresh everyone's memory, is roughly 120 acres, I think it's 190 acres and change. It's located within your PD zoning district, and that GDP approval from last July basically allows, subject to conditions, which are set forth in the resolution of approval, up to 400,000 square feet of retail commercial use and up to 350 residential units, 20% of which would be set aside for low and moderate income households. That approval also provided for a 20-year vesting period, consistent with the provisions for GDP approval as set forth in the municipal land use statute. Incidentally, just by way of history, again, the underlying PD zoning was the outgrowth of a settlement of longstanding litigation involving this particular property, and that settlement agreement, which dates back to 2009, established what was then a new zoning for the property, and that zoning basically allows for as much as 625,000 square feet of commercial space and about 540 residential units. If you do the quick math, you'll come to the conclusion that the GDP approval was for much less intense development than what that PD zoning allows. And just to give you some order of magnitude, the approval represents about 65% of the allowable commercial floor area in the zone, and also about 65% of the allowable residential density, and that would be on a track-wide basis. So back to the GDP approval and the current application, which is before you this evening, as you recall, the GDP approval included both a commercial component and a residential component. The application this evening is being advanced by the commercial developer, and the applicant this evening is seeking both site plan and subdivision approval in connection with a portion of the overall tract, and you're going to hear testimony shortly from the site engineer. And towards, I guess, the latter part of the applicant's direct case, I would anticipate that I'm going to be recalled to provide appropriate planning testimony in furtherance of the application, but that's going to be somewhere, somewhere down.
Down the road, yes.
Yes. You're welcome.
That's all we have for this, with this, this end, Mr. Chairman. Good questions.
Congratulations.
We will recall the witness.
Who will be called back?
The issue then is, if they're going to have witnesses testify and then come back again, if that's going to be the training and the hearing, what does the board, how are they going to handle cross-examination by the public?
What we're going to do, well, we're going to do is, after each witness, is allow the board, both the public, to question slash cross-examine the witness, because this, spreading it out over the slash meetings, et cetera, we'll never get through this, because you'll have to bring witnesses back each time, and testimony will in effect have to be reintroduced. So after each witness is done, now, the reason I was just letting this in is because I felt we were going to, yes, get an overview, wasn't much of an overview, so I'm not sure there's anything we can question about his testimony.
Well, I just don't, assuming that this is going to be a few nights in here, and if witnesses are going to pop up to say things that, you know, whether it's Mr. Phillips or their engineer, that they're going to come back in multiple times, is the board going to defer questioning of that witness until what appears to be the end of their testimony, or you're going to do it incrementally as they testify in each meeting? And that's really the question.
Well, I, you know, I think that would be difficult to do if you did it in aggregate, because that would require everyone coming to the meetings. If that witness were called up at a second or a third time at different meetings, you'd have to recall the testimony at a different, or a different meeting. I think that would not be beneficial to the public in attendance. Obviously, it's up to the applicant to determine how and when they provide testimony per expert witness or expert before the board, but frankly, to stay consistent, my recommendation would be to allow the public to post questions based on the testimony of that expert at that time.
We'll be back with this witness, we promised that to the public, so we'll have another shot at this witness.
But that's not, that's not what Mr. Settler Reno just said.
Look, I mean, it's your case to present, not ours, but it's our, but it's our position to react to the way that you presented. So to date, you've selected to present one expert with very limited testimony, which is fine, and I understand it. However, I understand my position that I don't want to have, you know, and based on the fact that this will be over multiple meetings, I don't want the public to be subject to recalling what was said a meeting or two ago.
I understand, we can, we can, we can, we can, either way is fine.
That said, does it make you more comfortable if I now ask the public if they have any questions on this matter?
I think, I think, as Mr. Settler Reno said, it would be easier for the public, it'd be easier to keep track of them.
I'm not sure what the public would.
But we're going to request, we're going to request if there are specific questions, because only questions at this time, not testimony. If there are specific questions, we want to make certain that you're heard at each and every point in time, but we're going to ask that you base your specific question on the specific testimony at that time. But that's the only request.
Rick, and I like this point that Mr. Phillips is.
has only given a summary of what's... He hasn't given any substantive testimony for anybody to ask questions about, right?
Well, I guess that would really be up to the public, but the cautionary words are that this is not to make comments. This is not to go beyond the scope of his testimony. So, he gave limited testimony. The cross-examination has to be within the scope of that limited testimony.
I have a question. May I?
For instance, no, we're not having this discussion. For instance, you couldn't get up and ask a traffic question?
That's right.
Or something about the home portion of this application, et cetera. You said very well, but if that's the case and we're under the consistent, first of all, is there anybody on the board that has any questions for this witness so far? Okay, anyone from the public? This arrangement is not going to work. You're going to have to bring that microphone somehow closer to up, and lift that thing over there.
Does this mine work, Dave?
Yes, it is.
Are you calling mine for a resident in Middletown? The question is for...
You know, I usually swear people in because it always drifts into testimony. But might I suggest that we don't swear you in to identify yourself, because if you go into testimony, either Mr. Pollak Castro is going to raise his hand and remove his caution.
This is probably the simplest question I would ask anyone in this whole set of proceedings, because I'm not sure if it's an appropriate question for now, but because you're making the decision to just potentially have it now, I wanted to ask a question. So, you can guide me if this is the right place to ask.
Has to do with his testimony that is provided here tonight so far.
Because I understand that it does. Because I understand that it does, but the rules, you know, you guys know the rules better than I do. So, my question is, why is the housing portion not being submitted now? It's not about the housing portion itself. Why is the housing portion not being submitted now?
Respectfully, it's not before this board, it's not part of this particular application.
Is that...
That's not an application.
It's not the application. Their application is for the residential portion of this.
Right.
There'll be another application for the residential portion.
I will do testimony on that piece later on, thank you. But that was the question I wanted to ask, why not?
This is not a combined application.
I understand. And my question was, why is it not a combined application when the intent is clearly to come back with the residential portion? Why is it not a combined application now?
It's not been filed yet.
No, it hasn't been. So, if I may address...
Just a simple question.
Correct. This is a concern of the board as well. There have been internal discussions about what happens. The application for the residential portion was filed, as I understand it, on Friday afternoon before Memorial Day, about, you know, in the afternoon. So, that application was filed. Newspaper says it was filed, that's an accurate statement. It was filed. So, the board's going to have to take a decision when that application is deemed complete and would be otherwise ready for a public hearing as to how are they going to conduct the public hearing or hearings going after that. But at this point in time, it's only been one or two days that it's been here, and it hasn't been reviewed. It's not deemed complete. This application took five months before it was deemed complete. So, that could happen to the Toll Brothers as well, the application that they filed on Friday. So, there will be, the board's going to have to make a decision as to what process will be used to review that application and this application if it's still pending.
Thank you. I realize I have one more question, if it's okay. I'm not sure if I heard you correctly, but is it the same owner of the entire property? The one that's put forth for development now or the one that's behind that is future residential application? Was it the same owner?
Yes, it is.
I think a lot of people didn't understand the ownership structure. I certainly wasn't sure if it was different, one owner, but different developers. So, one set of developers for the retail, commercial premises, and different Toll Brothers for the residential.
That doesn't mean the same owner owned it, correct?
I understand, I understand.
Right now, it's owned by one owner?
Right, working with two different developers to develop a commercial aspect and to develop a residential aspect.
That's correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure. It's your case indicating maybe not, but that's correct. Okay, thank you. That was good, thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, sir. Brian Marty. My question is, you have 20 years to develop the commercial aspect of this property. There's a 20-year vesting on the entire approval, which includes the commercial and the residential portions.
And just a follow-up, if you were granted, let's say, at the end of the week approval to start this whole program and construction, would you start on the commercial aspect of it right away or the residential aspect, or you don't know yet?
I can't answer, I don't know the answer. So, this application is just for the commercial portion as counsel stated, the residential portion just filed a few days ago.
Yes, I understand, but in the overall plan of the developers, what would you start first, breaking ground? I mean, residential's always more lucrative than building speculative commercial properties where the whole town is going up there.
He said he can't answer the question.
You're going to have to testify.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Here we go.
Just, I think it would help me a lot...
First you have to say who you are.
Warren Houdt. Tommy Dry, Middletown.
You swear you're listening?
H-O-U-C-K. I think it would help me, maybe other people here, to understand the size of this. Can you offer a comparison of the size of the retail to other developments around here, like Ponderell Condoms or the Grove or something like that?
Not at this time, it wasn't part of my testimony this evening, and I've not done that comparison, at least as of yet. All I can tell you is what was part of the GDP approval, which is essentially the foundation for the individual site plans. And the commercial site plan and subdivision is before this board this evening. And again, I will reiterate that it's 400,000 square feet of commercial space, up to 400,000, that was approved as part of the GDP last July.
I don't know, I mean, you've got to be...
You're not on the record? You can't testify.
Well, how many other witnesses definitely guessed that?
Correct.
Okay. No one else?
Mr. Phil.
Thank you.
Before you move ahead, sir, is my understanding we're going to do the subdivision first?
We will, yes. That's my understanding as well. You can say your name and record and your credentials, please.
My name is Gerard Fidemont. I'm a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I testified before this board, and I sent that testimony.
Yes, please, raise your hand. Please, raise your hand. So, your testimony does give the board's truth. All three of them have their truths on the record.
I do.
And your business address, please?
300 Kimball Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
So, your board's test is qualifications, repeat, as a professional engineer?
Yes. Okay, so for the board certification, I will be taking you through the GDP a little bit more in-depth, personally, to present the plans that were approved in the GDP. Then I will take you as that's part of the basis and the foundation of this application. And by the way, this presentation has been delivered to the board in terms of a flash drive and also a full of copies, or should have copies in front of you, full of copies.
Did all the board members have this presentation? It's in the light lane. Also, the code.
That was the original one we first reviewed.
Okay. We only changed the title. Let's make sure. I apologize for the...
There's problems in the back?
It's not. Hand it out to the board. Let's, let's take... So, okay, what you're about to show on your slideshow, I'm going to give you copies of it. You have copies of that. We give it to the board, and we'll mark one of them then as A1. And in terms of the flash drive? We don't have that, or I think that we really want?
We have one.
I don't think that that's particularly useful. We're going to get paper copies. I would suggest that we keep things at paper copies. They're not going to be corruptible. People can view them easier. Call me old-fashioned, but...
So, as I mentioned before, I'll be testifying regarding the GDP, the major subdivision. I also have a small video that I will play for the board.
Let's talk about the video. Is the video going to be... I have concerns about the video. If you want to show it, okay. You're going to have to give it in form that can be handed into the planning board office and in a form that's reviewable by the general public. And if you're going to play a video, you're going to have to have that video available as an exhibit for the entire course of the hearings. And you're going to be potentially subject to going back frame by frame of that video as people ask questions. If somebody says, "I want to see that video." No, that's it. Go back a second, go forward. What's that? How high is that tree? That's something that the public will have every right to ask questions of. So, before you, I guess there's no other way to submit that but in electronic form, whether on a flash drive or a disc or whatever. But if you want to submit that, you can.
My attempt is, is this package that you just gave us everything that's on that video?
Yes, sir.
So, page by page, if you will?
Yes.
You've got, that's all of the business, but okay. We've got a book here. So, is this, Mr. Gordon, then acceptable as Gerard, as the general public?
This is, but if they're going to have a video that has a lot of the same material on it, then the video is a different exhibit. And they play it, that's a different exhibit. And I'm just cautioning that although that's going to be hard to maintain that and show that to the public here during the hearings, during the course of the business day at the planning board office, if this matter ever gets litigated, you better hope that a judge says, "Sure. Plug it in, let me watch the movie." I just don't, you do it if you want. I just don't see why.
Is this, by the way, you, it's been described as a video. Is it really a slideshow of this?
No, it is actually a video.
It is a video.
That does not, the video is not contained on those pages, although that is a snapshot of one of the frames in the video.
There's a separate video that you'd like to show?
Yes, it's a separate video.
Understood, Mr. Phil.
And the purpose of which is to understand the overall layout and the architect has done a wonderful job showing the massing and the buildings. So, let me start. This is just the project team.
Do we have, do we have the video?
Yes.
Already?
Yes. Flash drive was...
I don't know, no.
Before, let's make sure.
Mr. Gordon, it's on the flash drive, which is, you know, you do not want, we have this, if we just file this for the board or if you file it right now. Whatever the board's later.
Well, it's unfair, because if there is important information on there, the board didn't have a chance to look at it. The professionals didn't have a chance to look at it. The public didn't have a chance to look at it. And I think, I think I'm saying very clearly, having litigated lots and lots and lots of cases, that that's going to present a problem. If you think that that video is so important that that evidence is something the board must see, the public must see, then we can do it.
You have other questions, and that's more in terms of, you know, we have one flash drive. This is electronic. There is a possibility that data gets corrupted, then the authenticity of the entire issue of video, should you reproduce it immediately, multiple frames? I mean, that's my concern, and it's up to you and the board to decide.
Mr. Gordon, the video is on the applicant's website currently. It's already in public domain. So, it's currently on the applicant-owned website. If that helps you with your answer.
No, it doesn't, because the board didn't go and do that. They're not doing independent investigations of what this application is all about. If somebody on the board happened to, you know, see your website, that's not part of the record here, you know? And only, only what's on the record before this board is going to be the basis of the board's decision and the basis of any subsequent judicial review. So, the fact that it may be on the website, that's interesting. People can look at it, the public, whatever, but it's not part of the record. I understand, I, look, go ahead. I don't want, I'm talking to them. I've said my concerns, you know, with your application. But if you're going to show the video, we're going to need it in whatever form you think is appropriate. And I'm not, is that...
We have a flash drive with the video, common flash drive.
Okay, but how is that, can we reproduce that?
Yeah. Sure, that's going to be more...
Somebody can give you multiple copies. We're going to have to call that.
Right, and that has to be copied, but not a particular piece.
Okay, we're not there yet, but when that goes in, we're going to need a magic marker or something to mark that thing so we know what that is. And we're going to, we'll put it in the file, then, if that's what you wish to do. As of right now, we mark, we haven't marked anything yet.
A1, which is this?
Oh, this is A1. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, right, A1 of this, right. So, this is A1. You want to go through that?
Yes.
Proceed, please.
Okay, so this is a plan from the GDP. The GDP was approved on April 15, 2015, as the planner had testified to. I'll briefly show you the plans. So, we have King's Highway East. We have Route 35. We have Kane's Lane. We also have a wetlands on the site. The wetlands delineation was approved by the DEP. It's on file and file number 1331050022.1. We have a woodland jug handle, and we also have the Twin Brooks Jug Handle. The total, the site total acreage is 118.6 acres. And we also have a flood hazard limit in the year of the wetlands at the east corner of the property. General Development Plan, Land Use Plan, approved 200 feet market rate units, 70 PO units. This is not part of this application. This application is for the commercial portion, which is up to 400,000 square feet of shopping center. We've got actually 338,000 and change proposed. The Open Space Plan identified 30%, 30% of greater open space. And we're proposing 33%. I'll share those, that plan with you as well. The Community Facility Plan, again, this is not part of our application. This is a separate application. The board has yet to review, but that has the community playground. Our commercial portion has a bus stop. The GDP also had a housing plan. The housing plan had residential component. The commercial portion does not have residential component. Again, not part of our application, but you'll be hearing this shortly. Circulation Plan. We have pedestrian circulation. We have an interconnect road that separates the residential from the commercial. And this was also part of the GDP plan set. Local Service and Utility Plan. We have water, suit, gas, electric. Services are available. There's also a connection to Thompson, are available, there's also a connection to Thompson, some offsite improvements that will accommodate that. Stormwater management plan, part of the GDP set, it recognized that basins would be used to control and manage the stormwater. And the proposed stormwater management in this application meets the GDP requirements for water quantity, runoff, and water quality. Phasing plan, for the GDP, we identified two separate phases, not, not specific as to which one would go first, however, we recognize that there were two phases in the phasing plan. So before I go to the major subdivision, I'll play the video.
Let's, let's, do you copy the document?
Yes.
We have the disc, we've got the disc that, the thumb drive we're using. So, I ask, since we don't, we have that, we have to have marked this now. If anybody has a magic marker, type in a permanent marker, and mark this on the sound. Pete? Can you verify that what's on here is what you're showing, this is an exact duplicate?
Yes, I, I had copied the, the file from my computer onto the flash drive personally.
There's an easy way to do that.
Play it from the drive.
Play it from the back.
There we go. Cut this, cut this proper. And then, then you can hand that in the other...
Smart, good.
How long is the video?
Two minutes and fifty-six.
Two hours and...
So this shows the King's Highway East and King's Lane on both sides of the property, five access points into the center, two signalized intersections, up to 340,000 square feet. And then this will fly through the site, starting at the main entrance on Route 35. And you can get a sense of the scale and the mass, the landscaping, the clock tower, the signage, and the architect will describe in further detail all the wonderful tract developments that he's incorporated into the center. I'm just a civil engineer, I work from the ground down, but... This is a good representation of the upscale shopping center, the, the landscaping, the tract of landscaping along the frontage. Again, the, the articulation of the buildings, not everything is the same, there's definite separation from retail to retail, very attractive awnings, lighting, roofing, projections. And again, the landscaping is very attractive along the frontage. These are just names, these aren't actual tenants. Again, this is a more, you know, architect's, artist's rendering, but we have the ability nowadays to put this on a computer, and certainly looks a lot better than a black and white picture on a two-dimensional sheet. And so it just shows the upscale attractiveness of the overall center. And of course, the detailed plans that have been submitted and are reviewed by professionals are ultimately what will govern the submission and the review process. This is more of a visual to get everyone to understand what we're proposing.
Does that, does that video presentation exactly match the submitted plans?
Not exactly, no. It's a rendering.
Okay.
What's different?
What's different, there are some lights on that Center Boulevard that were originally contemplated that are not on there. I, I, I can't articulate each and every difference, but the concept, the overall look and feel is what the center is going to look like. Maybe that tree wasn't a maple, maybe it was a...
Right, I, I mean, I'm just gonna tell the board, I think you have to tell the board exactly what's different from that to your plans.
Fair enough.
Because it's misleading if it's not. You had 20-foot-high trees, you have, you putting 20-foot-high trees in?
Of course not, it will eventually grow to that height, but we don't talk plans.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying that you're gonna get cross-examined from now till when this is over, about every frame there. You introduced it, you guys didn't wanna pay attention, you didn't. Now tell the board what's different.
As, as I mentioned, it's a rendering, and it represents the concept of the site. What will stand to testimony will be the plans themselves. So, do you wanna withdraw that as an exhibit?
Wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. You cannot talk out in the audience. Everything, everything comes forward, it gets picked up on the record, and that's where the record is.
Yes.
So please, you think you're whispering in your neighbor's ear, and it's coming up here loud and clear.
We have another witness that can testify as to the video and the differences, Mr. Gordon, specifically, our architect will do that, Mr. Massa.
But he, Mr. Massa, isn't the witness, Mr. Fittamont is. He put that in, that's his exhibit, even though he didn't prepare it. And all we're asking is what's different, so that the board and the public can understand that that's conceptual, what's different between that and the plan that has been prepared by Langin and before the board interviewed by the board's professionals.
Understood, so you can introduce Mr. Massa right now, so he has that very question, because it's on your mind, the board's mind, the public's mind, and he will do that right now.
All I'm gonna suggest is that this should be more coordinated. That if, if Mr. Fittamont worded up, and I presume that Mr. Fittamont has more testimony beyond...
He does.
Then it's not like, oh wait, now we have another witness to slide in here to fix that than somebody else, it's just too disorganized. So, Mr. Fittamont's on the stand, if the answer is, you don't know, you can't enunciate all the differences between that video and the, and the filed plans, can just say that?
I have not articulated all of the differences between the video and the submitted plans. However, there will be further testimony regarding that exhibit from our architect.
You haven't articulated, do you know, do you know, if we...
I, I know a few, but I...
You said the lights.
Yes. Probably, probably some, some landscape, probably some trees that aren't the right style trees.
How about the safety strips crossing the roads? When you were looking, you had, you were checking safety strips, it's got exactly where they are, you're opening up a...
That, that has undergone some changes over the...
Okay, and that's, that's, there's a lot of changes, then?
We're gonna withdraw these, Mr. Gordon.
So, you can keep the flash drive. You, you can keep the flash drive, do we show, I, I guess probably not, since it was shown, we probably have to have it, we're not relying upon it. So, you have to hand it in, just so we have a record of what happened?
Base on, based on... It's Mark 82, and then...
So we, we draw?
Please proceed.
Okay. So before you, is the subdivision exhibit that we submitted? It's the major subdivision, that shows the 118 acre tract. Basically, we're looking to consolidate the various lots that exist in the PD zone and subdivide this into up to three lots. Initially, we had submitted a subdivision plan that showed the commercial tract, separated by line down the middle, the residential tract. And between the two, we had shown an access easement, public access easement for an interconnect road. Subsequent to that submission, we, we submitted the more detailed subdivision, which incorporates the roadway takings, I'm sorry, vacating some right-of-way and making modifications, which is ongoing with the DOT, and our traffic engineer will be talking about the traffic aspects of that. But we've got a modification to King's Lane, and we also have a modification to the woodland jug handle, as well as the modification to King's Highway East. And so this is turning into a, will become dedicated right-of-way, and then a lot that's adjacent to the Wells Fargo lot, which would support a standalone retail structure.
Just, just a point of clarification for the public, you changed your orientation on that from the previous, correct?
I, yes, the orientation of this is not the same as the site...
Give me a favor? Don't do that again. Keep them all on the same.
So just for everyone's orientation, I apologize, this is Route 35, and north is straight up the page, and all of the other plans that you will see, the site plans, other than this major subdivision, Route 35 is along the bottom of the page, and do need those. So this is the major subdivision, we received a comment letter from your professionals, we have, we're in the process of responding to that, but we, we had no issue with the comments. We will revise the flat to meet the township tax assessor requirements. We will provide right-of-way vacation subject to township approval and DOT, and we will provide meets and bounds when we put the, the, the approval of the planning board attorney, and we'll provide all of the surveys.
What's the revision date? This has, the one I'm looking at has revision date of, the plan date of 9/22/2015?
So I've got a hard copy of everything here.
Oh, revision date 5/16?
5/16, 26.
So is that the last revision date through 5/16? I know this is a minor detail, I don't wanna bore the board, but could you go through and just show with colors, maybe easier, what lots are being created as a result of the subdivision?
Yes. I could stay out at this level, or I could zoom in in terms of getting more clarity in this corner, in this corner.
Okay, but just start with the bigger one.
Sure, sure.
The pink lot is...
So you're dealing with someone who's colorblind here, so I'll...
Okay, the one to the right.
One to the right, that is referred to as Lot 200, that's the residential tract. And that contains the public access easement for the interconnect. That would be, that would be the site plan application, it's not part of this application. We are focused on the commercial development portion, which is light blue.
If the board doesn't like, 'cause there have been some earlier meetings, if, we can go through, just to cut through, so everybody can understand. So the, the one to the top of the page, the top left?
Yes. So the top left, along, this, this is King's Highway East, and...
As we know it today.
As you know it today. And this major subdivision provides right-of-way to allow for the realignment of King's Highway East to the jug handle on Route 35. So this color is purpleish. So the purpleish portion contains the revised alignment of King's Highway East, as well as the detention basin, we, we call it detention basin 1B. And then we have the transition from town-owned, the town right-of-way to DOT right-of-way. So this would be the DOT jurisdiction. Jug handle is coming off of Route 35, back to the signalized intersection, and that's brown, that's the brown area here. Further testimony will be provided on the actual configuration by traffic engineer.
There's a basin on the property going to, right-of-way going to the town?
The basin is to the right-of-way, yes.
Who's gonna maintain that basin?
Village 35, yeah.
In the township property?
Yes.
On the property going through the DOT right-of-way, in the brown or grayish color, is there a basin in there?
Yes.
Who's gonna maintain that basin?
The applicant. At this point, the applicant proposes to maintain it, it's ultimately up to the DOT, and further testimony we provide to our traffic engineer.
The, the one over to the top, that's next to Wells Fargo?
The one that's next to the Wells Fargo is a retail lot, and that contains a standalone retail.
Is that...
He's talking about the base near Wells Fargo, correct?
So, is there a basin on, like, next to Wells Fargo as well?
No.
So, the, the light blue next to Wells Fargo, yes, that's gonna be a separate lot, does that conform?
It, it is a part of the GDP approval, and this lot, this lot, because of the realignment, it sort of cuts the parcel in two, so, but it is part of the GDP.
Right, but it has a, but as a subdivision lot, does it conform?
It conforms with the PD zone requirements that allow for the, the disruption of the commercial component, and any further subdivisions are not subject to the strict criteria of that, it's part of the PD zone.
So, that's not subject to any bulk standards?
No. However, we, we did provide the parking to accommodate a standalone retail, although it is part of the shopping center.
Can we have a...
He lands on.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna turn it off. Can we have a client or comment with regard to the, the subdivisions not being compliant with bulk standards based on the GDP approval?
No, what, what they're saying is, where is that, in our review letter, the Wells Fargo lot, which is a part of the PD zone, that's not in compliance. That was not part of the GDP approval, and...
Well, well, sorry, correct.
Correct. The, this portion, right, which is, let's call it farcelate, as they showed in the subdivision, that was a part of the GDP approval. And because of the realignment, it creates that lot. So, we didn't consider that as a variance in that case for the lot area, per se, because it was a part of the GDP approval. For Wells Fargo and the other lots is where we identified variance, if that makes sense. For Wells Fargo and the other lots is where we identified variance, if that makes sense.
See, you're going to tell me there's others, because you're telling me one is part of the... And you're going to tell me there's others, like down the other end here, like Sleepy and Community Appliances?
Sleepy is not a part of this, we asked the question whether it is a part of it. Community Appliances in the M1 zone, we identified variance for that in, if that's registered. And Walz, correct.
That's why, because, Mr. Shapiro, I did a one-part meeting and kind of went through this, and I just wanted everybody to, it's important to see the detail. So some of these lots exist, and some of the lots are being, with the adjoining properties, walls and appliance plates, you can zoom in, you can see that there's been faceted, there's some changes to those lots as well. So that's part of the subdivision.
And we have those comments in our review letters about, we've asked these questions, but we cannot clear what, where, to give us more details, because the plans were very difficult to read. And I think other engineers left us, but I think I get the same.
I think a specific question that I would have for a planner is, which, based on the GDP approval, which proposed up by lots are not now subject to the bulk criteria?
The blue, the light blue.
So the other lots in the first parcel are still subject to the bulk criteria?
The Wells Fargo, which is at the corner of the old lot. That, then if you go down, there's these lots, which is the lot that is in orange, that is subject, that's in M1 zone, a completely different zone. And in fact, with the vacation, it gets split zone into two. So, but, but that's, we identified variance in that, in that, in that lot. The other one, 817 Lot 2, we had asked the question whether it's a part of this, because we didn't receive any development agreements, did not receive any information. So we have asked that question, we don't know.
So based on the color coding that the applicant presented, the blue, you encourage the blue...
Blue is a part of the GDP.
Blue follows GDP, anything that is...
PD zone, yes.
Anything that is colored differently within the blue tract is subject to the bulk criteria. Is that accurate?
That's, that is correct, that's how we have...
Very good, thank you.
I have a question, is the used car lot totally absorbed in this?
Which is the used car lot?
Just north of the, of where you have that small shopping center.
I don't, that, I mean, they can answer it, but I don't believe, based on our plans. We just, you need to go.
Yeah.
The way, it's not so much, not part of the... It's our understanding that it's not a part of this application, based on the information they provided. I think the applicant is very close to answering this.
Yeah, the Verizon lot is not part of this.
Okay, but the, where the used car lot is, that's gone, it's absorbed. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, we flew through like the first couple pages of this, and one of the first pages is in regards to open space. And on here, it says, open space in this total shall be equal to or greater than 30%. And then underneath us is 33%. There's a highlighted Phase 1, I understand that. But then of that, there's two arrows, one going into Phase 1, one going into Phase 2. Is it 33% of Phase 1, is it 33% of the whole lot? We just, the county just spent $10 million to preserve 250 acres.
Excellent question, I should clarify that, it's for the entire tract.
So for the whole Phase 1, Phase 2 combination, 33% of it is remaining open space?
Correct.
It should be clarified upon this, and it's not, because in this green, it says to me, the green, there's 33% of this land is open space?
I believe it's noted on the plan that it pertains to the entire tract. It's very small, I've exercised it a little by searching through, because those do clarify that it's for the entire tract. And so, and I also have another exhibit that will show the 30% open space plan based on our actual submission for this site plan application. So you'll have another opportunity to comment on that.
We'll dress up in detail for it.
Thank you. Mr. Shapiro, on that plan you just handed, Mr. Perry was referring to, we're, do you have, can you go back to that sheet again?
Space area, there you go, the space area. Here it is. You see where in the lower left it says, open space? And there's a reverse jug that goes around it?
Yes.
That's not what the, that's not what your current plan shows, right?
Correct.
So your current plan matches up, your current plan...
I haven't gotten to that, the current plan, but I, again, I will get to that point, and I can, we can talk about that in more detail.
This sheet here that says, open space, is not...
This was from the GDP plan, and this is just merely reflecting the fact that we are obligated to provide 30% open space for the entire tract. That's the commercial and residential portions combined.
Mr. Chairman, I, just a quick point, counsel. If these are two separate applications, how is it that we're counting 24 acres of open space in an application that we're not considering? That's what I don't understand, how, you're talking about 2/3 of your acreage is in an application that we're not considering?
But I can tell you that, if you look at this plan, and you see the white lines, and you see this portion of the site, and Hull Brothers, we haven't been working in a vacuum, we've been working with Hull Brothers. They, we have shared that plan with them, and they agreed to the open space that we're showing on their plan, albeit you haven't looked at it, and confirmed that independently. But I can tell you, and I'm testifying, that we have coordinated that open space with both lots, both the commercial and residential.
That's not his question, right? The question is, a more basic question, that the way, and Sam, you can correct me, but the way that the ordinance is written, they have to have 30% of the original site as open space. So that if, for example, if there were, if all the open space was in Phase 2, and zero is in Phase 1, that still might satisfy the ordinance. And then when the board would consider a subdivision, you have to ensure that that open space actually happens.
Correct.
So that's why, it's not 30% of Phase 1 and 30% of Phase 2, it's 30% of the overall site. If you grant the subdivision, there'll have to be conditions within that subdivision rule requiring that that open space in the back actually happens.
And we had in our review letter talked about conservation easements to ensure that indeed that open space happens, and we asked questions about that as well. So, because we consider that, the way the ordinance reads, as the entire tract, which is 118 acres, the GDP also mentioned open space for the entirety. So it should just, the way I understand it, and I cannot provide testimony on his behalf, but the way I understand it, that portion of Phase 1 that is getting from the phase transportation, but it satisfies, in terms of acreage, satisfies the entirety of the tract, which is 30% as per the ordinance. Is that clear, Mr. Perry?
Thanks, thanks, Sam.
In furtherance of those comments, I also suspect that the applicant, at whatever time that this application in the future would draw to a conclusion, that any obligations on behalf from the GDP that are not, that were not specific to this application would be part of conditional approval, if that would be the case at some point in the future. And I suspect there would be no objection to that, such that the board would be able to capture all of the requirements of the GDP, not subject to the fact that we didn't hear this application before the other application.
That's right.
Thank you. Would you go to that major subdivision just to show and zoom in on Joe Campbell from the southern portion, the southern piece of the portion of our... Just so the board's aware, there, Mr. Shapiro, the, what's in, the, the top one, that's in yellow, that's yellow. That's, I forget, is that Walz or is that the...
That's Walz.
That's Walz. So the property, what they have more, I'm sorry to... The property, they showed as a driveway around. That's going to be part of basically functioning as, no, that Jug Handle won't exist anymore. The Jug Handle is going to be that, the cross hatch. So the property in light blue behind the yellow, yep, that's owned by Mountain Hill. And right now, that's going to, right now, that's still going to be by Mountain Hill. It's going to be part of Mountain Hill's property.
But Mountain Hill will, will be conveying a portion of this to Lot 12, Lot 817 to this color system?
So the appliance, the appliance shop is going to, through a subdivision, is going to be given, sold, transferred, wherever it is, that kind of salmon-colored property, making that lot larger.
That's right.
Including the road. Including the vacant...
Making the DOT right-of-way.
And then the other thing that's a subdivision or a piece, is as Kings Lane is relocated, you wind up with that kind of bubble there. And that property below that, that arc there, that's going to be given to, sold to, transferred to the facet property, or facet furniture property. So those are little parts, pieces that wind up as being part of this subdivision. So facet, the appliance shop, right now, not the sleep shop, those properties will be getting little bits and pieces, and then you're going to create a lot that's going to be on the other side, on the other one, next to the Wells Fargo, that's going to be a lot. So those are all components of the subdivision.
That's correct. So essentially, three lots ultimately, it's some demands to expand into four lots.
Can we go back up to the top, just to make sure? That, who's the lot?
We call this Lot 101.
Right, I'm sorry, yes. That lot, Lot 101, was originally in this open space. That was an original basin, wasn't it? Or a detention basin?
Yes.
Where did that detention basin move to?
I have another exhibit that I will show you, the stormwater management plan. In general, the stormwater basin was moved to this location, remind you. This is the area of the right-of-way that we dedicated to the township that the applicant has agreed to.
The detention basin.
Yeah, it's, it's between, well, it's sized appropriately so that we meet the NJDP water reduction requirements as a major site plan.
Well, I'm asking, I'm sure that there's all of those requirements, but I am asking the question specifically because all of these detention basins count as open space.
Yes, and that's permitted as per the ordinance, with, with the reduction, actually.
Make sure it continues to add back up to, in your case, 33%.
Yes, and it does. Any other questions for the board, no? That's all, I'll move on, that's, that's what I have on the subdivision.
The purple now, between the blue and the, whatever color it is, there's the road.
Yes.
Where is the road? Phase 1, Phase 2's...
The, the public access, the public access interconnect is on the, it's on the property of the residential, so it's on the residential lot. With cross easements to allow for access as well to the commercial lot. And the, with the understanding that whoever builds first comes first, and it looks like we're the, we're the first applicant to the table, whoever comes first in terms of construction will be building that interconnect road. That's, that's the reciprocal agreement between the two parties.
If the DOT is giving you that property, those, if the DOT is giving you that property of that purple area, you have two, you will possibly have two bases in there. Is that still part of your open space, although that's DOT property?
We, it's part of the PD zone, so it's within the PD zone. Basically, part of the calculation. Yes. There's a lot of questions about the open space.
And that's what we're saying, what we're saying, where we said this is, there's a lot of differences on what you're showing us now, and through conclusions, which we'd have to take into, into effect on this.
I will, I will circle back to that question.
So to clarify, will we hear testimony on this access road?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And just to continue, a question with regard to the access road. You noted that there was an agreement between both developers, the residential, commercial developer, that whoever, whoever developed first is going to build that road. That's very nice that you have that agreement, but I suspect that you'll post that as part of any finalizing document, is that correct, with the board?
That's correct.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to just ask a question back down by Walz Sleep Shop, appliance area. You've kind of, in switching the road, changing the road there, you've got a little slither of blue that's kind of left over, that I guess is part of the Walz Sleep Shop or whatever. Why is that little tiny, not, excuse me, that's still, well, so here's what I need to be clear on. That little tiny blue, is that still part of the subdivision, not Walz? That, yes.
Right there.
Yep, right there.
That's still part of the, that is still part of the commercial lot.
Of the commercial. Such a slither, just curious, like, why is that just kind of like...
Well, it's not, it's actually contiguous with the rest of the center, this being an easement, this being a public access easement.
But is Walz getting the light blue? The light blue, we're giving the appliance shop, you're...
Technically, the ownership and the survey...
That's the question.
It's, it's, it reverts back to the commercial lot.
See, the other one goes, the pink is pink, the one down below, what's that, the appliance?
That's going to go to the appliance company?
Yeah, I mean, that goes back to this, this road. I'm just curious, what this anomaly is all about, with this little slither that is not to the commercial property, but to the development. Was there a reason for that?
Well, this, this all gets reverted back again to, to the commercial lot, and we, we have the, we're proposing to provide landscaping, and just by default, it goes back to the commercial lot because of the prior ownership.
I don't, I don't think that's true. The general law, the general rule on, on vacation of property is that it splits at the center.
Correct.
So that if that, if that's an accurate depiction of the right-of-way, the existing Jug Handle, and the existing property lot. So, we're going to have to ask about the, the, the sleep shop.
Yes.
If that's an accurate depiction of the existing property lot, as that jug handle in that section is vacated, it's all going to Mountain Hill because they own both sides of what is the existing jug. Let me just, so behind the sleep shop, it would revert all to Mountain Hill because essentially they own what you would never, you'd never think about it, they own that piece of property over there now. So when it reverts to the jointer, it reverts all to that.
Yes.
At least in that order there. Now, why, why they're not giving that, why them and the sleep shop having to work something out or whatever, I don't know, that's for them to work on. But as you just go to the south on the appliance, let's go back to the appliance. The appliance, the appliance property, when, if that jug handle is vacated, it splits half to the appliance, half to Mountain Hill.
Yes.
And then Mountain Hill is giving half of that, whatever is vacated, plus that other, whatever color you want, that shape there, there, you're giving that, eating that, transferring that, whatever it may be, to the appliance shop. So, the appliance shop lot will be increased by the darker salmon and the lighter salmon in that particular slide, it'll be the combined.
And also, a point of caution, the D O T owns that jug handle in fee, so technically it is not split.
But when they dedicate it, what happens?
Regardless, in this case, the, the ultimate disposition is that, as an agreement would be, could Village Thirty-Five give this to, to, to the.
So that's going to be, it's not as complicated, the Basset lot, it doesn't involve the D O T property, it's not, it's not the same condition. Is it fair to say the applicant's talking to the sleep shop owner?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify, because you answered the question, the, the sliver, the blue sliver in the, to the left of the jug handle, from the tax records, it, it's block eight seventy dot three, that belongs to the salmon property.
That's true.
Yes. So that's, because we got, I was looking at it, that's why, that's why I, I raised my hand. It's not, it doesn't belong to Village Thirty-Five, from, from our tax records, it belongs to the salmon property, community of plants. And we asked that question because we wanted it clearly demarcated in, in the plan, so this was something, you know, it didn't.
And that's, that's part of the agreement, why we have to provide them with the additional property.
So then who gets the, so then is it, so you guys get?
This reverts all back to the.
That's something that the board gets to.
And if we're referring to Walt's Sleep Shop, what about the yellow that goes beyond the existing road?
Right, there's that triangle, right.
So they would get half of that jug handle.
So, so Walt's Sleep Shop is, is part of the subdivision, because it's expanding.
Well, this is, this is, just by default with the D O T and the details haven't been worked out with the D O T, but this would revert back to Walt's Sleep Shop.
Just a final clarification, who will be responsible for the maintenance and center for that pink area, Walt's Sleep, the appliance, excuse me, clients, correct, on the northeast side of the road?
This will be the responsibility of the appliance owner, but ultimately will be their, their property to, to maintain, own, operate, and keep. This, this is definitely a complicated, of course, surveyor, a complicated.
Even though it's complicated, at the end of the day, they're winding up with a bigger jug handle, and they, they're doing this to get their D O T. Is that true?
Yes. Yes, and, and there is a benefit to the appliance store that's getting additional land as well, and access.
And, without delay, if you're also talking to the sleep shop to try to make that a more normal situation.
Yes.
Whatever that may be, whoever that happens, they're not going to get in the middle of that.
Can we have a subdivision? Yes, I, that includes, Chairman, can we have a subdivision aspect of this presentation?
Question from the board? All right, everybody.
Just wanted to thank, the clarification that the jug handle that is up Route Thirty-Five north, closer to the bank, that, the residents probably can't see, everything's pretty small for us even, that is the twin Rose Avenue, right there.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify that, that really was not said outside. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll present the major.
Are there questions with respect to subdivision in the public or?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're still, you still have more to do. Yes.
Unless we want to pause these.
I would suggest to the board that we don't, let, let, we can't keep on segmenting testimony like letting it public.
So, this is the major site plan, open space plan?
That's not the same as what the board has.
It's colored, yeah.
Yes, this has been, this has been submitted before, the board is also in the.
It's not the same as what the board has.
It's not colored. We, we have to go with this one, so.
That's what I'm saying, it may be the same, but just not colored. Or maybe it is, but. It's pink, it's not. This one's submitted when we're, it's been, it's a color.
Okay, yes, apparently the colors didn't appear as bright as what's showing up on the, on the screen, but it's, it is the same plan because the last revised date on this is five, six, twenty sixteen.
It's, it, it shows very faintly on the exhibit that the board has. The board has the paper copy and it's faint green.
It's two greens. Okay, so to.
Let me just make sure, what is the date of that up there?
Five, May sixth, twenty sixteen.
This is. No, ours is different, it's January twenty second, twenty.
No, you're looking down the bottom right, which one of these guys applies.
Provision dated May sixth.
I see the question, okay. The plan the board has is May sixth, and yours is?
May, May sixth, same one. Again, color is just a little.
Is that drawing number C S six oh one, just to confirm?
Yes, it is. C S six oh one, titled Open Space Area Breakdown, last revised May sixth, twenty sixteen. So in response to, to the board member regarding the calculation of the open space, now you can see that D O T basin is not colored, so it was not included in our calculation on the Kings Highway thirty-five. And so, this, this open space exhibit shows the balance of the site, and again, majority of the portion of the site does discontain on the residential portion of the lot, and we, we have provided thirty-three percent open space based on our calculation, which is what was, thirty percent is the minimum requirement is a P D zone. Any questions on the open space part? Okay, the next, next plan shows the architects right of the site. Again, this, this mimics the, the plan, so it's just a, a pretty picture showing Kings Highway East along with various retail, and we're not here on behalf of the residential, but we're showing a portion of the residential on the other side of the interconnect, not part of the certification, with Kings Lane and Route Thirty-Five, and this shows landscaping and all the green. We do have a significant portion of wetlands in the back of the retail five as well. To the site plan, so, this site plan is, if you've seen these submitted sets, we, we have a match line down the center line of the site, which does become difficult to review the plan, so we've basically pieced this together, put together this exhibit. So the match line is basically here, but we pieced this together, so you can see the entire commercial track in one screen. And again, Kings Highway is, Kings Highway East is located on the left with Route Thirty-Five at the bottom of the page. We've got the interconnect road, it's located to the east of the site, and we have Kings Lane located to the south. Kings Road Jug Handle, and these access points to the site will be articulated by a traffic engineer. This shows you the, the retail and, and the various modifications to the surrounding roadways, as well as the basins, we have the basins shown throughout the site. So in terms of the zoning table for the, for the, for the commercial lot, we have the, we've got the, the land use courses are permitted, shopping center, we're proposing shopping center, so we're compliant in terms of use. We have a land area, minimum land area of twenty acres, we're proposing fifty hundred point nine two acres, that's compliant. We have lot coverage minimum fifty percent, I'm sorry, maximum of fifty percent, we have forty-five point five percent proposed, which is compliant. We have an open space minimum of thirty percent, and rounding the thirty-three point, decimal points up, it's rounds off to thirty-four percent, we're compliant. We have a floor area ratio, point one two is the max, we have point zero seven, we're compliant. We have the building components, the building setback from an arterial road, fifty feet, we have fifty point six feet proposed, compliant. Track boundary, thirty-five feet minimum, we've got fifty point six feet, we're compliant. The single family residential zone minimum is seventy-five feet, we propose eight hundred and fourteen feet, we're compliant. We have internal street, minimum distance of twelve feet, with twenty-five feet proposed, compliant.
Go back to one.
Sure.
Single family residential zone minimum, you say seventy-five feet, you require, under chart here, it says eight hundred and fourteen. Yeah, we can cross that out, hundred and something.
It's, it's eight hundred and fourteen feet. Building height maximum sixty feet or four stories, or less than sixty feet and less than four stories, we're compliant. The parking, parking from an arterial road setback minimum is fifty feet, we are at fifty feet, we're compliant. Track boundary, right of way, setback minimum, fifty feet, we're at one feet, this isn't existing, nonconformity, and I'll point that out to you, that's where the. That's related to the. Track boundary, I'll, I'll point that out to you. Physical setbacks, physical building setbacks, six feet minimum, we've got six feet. Single family residential sign setback, a hundred and fifty feet, we propose eight hundred and fifty three feet. We have standard stall spaces for parking, nine by eighteen, we're proposing nine by eighteen, we're compliant. Parking ratio, parking ratio is four point five spaces per thousand square feet, proposing five point two six overall. The quantity of spacing, of spaces is a minimum of seventeen hundred, we had spaces, we're proposing seventeen hundred and fifty-two spaces, we're compliant. The quantity of ADA spaces is twenty plus one, we did receive some comments, so we're in the process of complying with the plan, with the engineers' review of that. Quantity of spaces, this is for the retail, one space for a hundred and fifty square feet, and that's the retail, that's the Wells Fargo, thirty-four spaces required, thirty-four spaces provided, we're compliant. The quantity of ADA spaces, again, this is for retail one, which we're treating as a standalone retail pad, two spaces required, three spaces provided, we're compliant. The access minimum aisle width for a one-way is eighteen feet, we have no one-way aisles proposed. Minimum aisle width for two is twenty-four feet, we propose twenty-four feet, we're compliant. The minimum loading berth dimensions, twelve by thirty-five, there's some clarification that we need to make on the drawings, we're proposing to be compliant, we just need to make that clarification on our plans in response to your engineers' comments. The lot access, minimum driveway width access is twenty-four feet, we propose twenty-four feet, we're compliant, and the minimum lane width, twenty-four feet, we propose twenty-four feet, we're compliant. In terms of lighting, the maximum height of lighting poles is thirty-five feet, we propose less than thirty-five feet, therefore we're compliant, and the minimum lighting level is point five foot candles, we propose point five, point six foot candles, we're compliant. So that includes the zoning analysis of the site, and in terms of the actual lot coverage, we've got a breakdown of the buildings in terms of its use, restaurant, retail, and shopping center total is three hundred and thirty-three thousand, and when you add retail one, it's thirty-eight thousand forty, fifty-five square feet of overall building coverage for the two lots, provide one oh one and one hundred. So that, that was for the, the P D zone. Now, we also have, within the M one zone, the, lot one and three, which is the, the appliance store, and we also have lot two and lot three. So we have the appliance store, this is existing, again, we're making the lot bigger, so I can go through this in detail, but there are existing nonconformities with, with respect to not only the use, in terms of my review of the, of the ordinance, furniture store, appliance repair services is what's permitted, this is an appliance store, but existing nonconformities. Lot area minimum three acres, it's, existing is point four seven. We're proposing, again, with the additional land to make it point eight acres, however, it's still makes existing nonconformity, so we're not getting it above three acres. We've built a lot, minimum is two and a half acres, then point four seven acres is what's existing, point eight proposed, existing nonconformity. Lot frontage minimum is five hundred feet, it's got two hundred and sixteen feet, we're not changing the lot frontage along Route Thirty-Five, it's existing nonconformity. Lot coverage maximum, sixty percent, that's compliant, fifty-four percent, and fifty-eight percent is the ultimate lot coverage, we're still compliant. And 58 percent is the ultimate lot coverage, we're still compliant. Floor area ratio, we're compliant, 22 percent permitted, 22 percent is existing, and because we're adding more land, we further reduce the proposed scenario. For the building, front minimum is 100 feet, 17 feet is existing. Significant existing non-conformity for the front minimum, side minimum, rear minimum setbacks for the building. The gross floor area minimum is 40,000 square feet. It's only 40, just under 4500 square feet. It's non-conforming, existing. The first floor area minimum is 40,000 square feet, then existing non-conformity. Building height, 40 feet, three stories. We are less than 40 feet. It's a one-story structure, so that's compliant. Terms of parking and access, we have standing spaces, 9 by 18. We're compliant in the existing and proposed conditions. Furniture appliance store, it's part at a ratio of one space for 800 square feet, which yields 10 spaces, and we're proposing 25 spaces, which is compliant. The quantity of ADA spaces is one space, we're compliant with respect to that. Maximum height for signage, and I will just clarify that you did not see signage testimony or table on the PD zone. That will be done by the architects, a separate sign package. And they'll be articulating the, the signage package for this project, for the commercial portion. But the, for the M1 zone, we do have the maximum height of freestanding sign is 12 feet, it's 4.42 feet, that's compliant. Here's where we, we've added a sign. So, the maximum amount of freestanding signs is one. There is one on the property, but as you recall, that salmon area now connects to that public access, just to the, just to the east of the site, towards, towards the Jug Handle that we have, that's a public access. That, that's one sign. Because of that additional frontage and the driveway entrance, we're proposing an additional sign as a variance, where one sign is permitted.
Can we clarify, just so that I think we've got the same page, the board, public. As to that particular property, they're changing the size. That, that property gets bigger. They need some variances as a result of that. It still gets bigger, it's more conformant, but they still need some variances. So, one of the variances that they're going to require was the two signs, because he has two driveway locations, and he's asking for sign. That's variance. That's not existing condition. Some of the other things are existing conditions, and they're making them better. So, for example, start from the top, minimum lot area is 3 acres. We're going from 0.47 to 0.8. It still requires variance, they made it better. Same thing with buildable lot area, the minimum goes from 0.47 to 0.8. Those are not the existing conditions. Those are the change conditions, still requiring variance, but better than what they were looking for.
Well, I think those things are, those are variances.
Mr. Carr, are you going to suggest a, a recent middle of this chart?
No.
They're not, they're not listed as existing non-conformity variance scenario?
I think they, they are, they are existing, non-conforming, and they're making them better. So, is it, I think, just as a variance, they're variances. They're reducing better. So, I don't, I'm not saying to have to end the chart again. I'm just saying that these are picky things, because they have these weird lot configurations that are going on. But as this chart goes by, those, to me, are variances, even though they're making them better, it's easy for the board to grant.
This is another issue too, with the sheet, with the new, with the new log, I'm looking at it, comparing it with our zoning map. It, with the big new configuration, goes for 571 and 3, it, it does a split zoning.
It's a split zone.
Yeah, so, so the portion closer, the portion from those, Village 35, it splits the zone. So, typically, a zone goes in the middle of the right-of-way, so in Woodland Drive, the portion that's to the east of Woodland Drive is, is in the PD zone, so this property splits zone.
Right, so I guess really the only one that's truly a variance is the one they called that, and that is two signs were split.
Right, but the other second sign, you know, when you look at it now, and it goes in the PD zone, it doesn't go in the M1 zone.
Right, so, nobody was contemplating this when the ordinance was drafted out?
Right, this wasn't, because this came to us on May 16th, I believe, right? May 16th? So, it was very few weeks before the application.
I think these may be technical variances.
They're technical variances, correct.
The second, the second column is for the, is for the sleep shop?
Yes.
Yeah, he's saying furniture store.
Yeah, you said furniture store and both.
Right, but I think this is the sleep shop.
Which one is walls, the second, second columns?
Lot 3 is the Bassett furniture.
Lot 3 is always the right one. And the middle one is the sleep shop. And on that one there, you're not, why is that lot, just tell me, why is that lot changing? It's changed. What's happening? Or, it's not part of your application?
Correct, that's changing because of the, by virtue of the fact that the, the big gate is the right of way. That's how it modifies the A grade to a very minimus amount.
Lot area changes slightly because of the right-of-way dedication, right-of-way vacation.
Right, and we're not, we don't know what the A is, but, but we do know that it's much larger, or it's, it's larger than what's currently exists.
Those one here, they're only getting a sliver of work, is the right of way.
Correct, if you'd like, I can read down the list.
I just, do you create any variances? The last column is for Bassett?
The last column is for Bassett, yes.
And for Bassett, you are adding some property to that size of that, that lot?
We are adding property, as depicted in the subdivision plan, again, the benefit of the, the bow out of Kane's Lane. So, we've got an existing right-of-way in front of their property of Kane's Lane, as well as an additional piece.
And again, that's going to wind up saying that's a split lot configuration again, because the part that Kane added is into the PD zone?
Correct, that's another split lot.
So, there might be, in that column, there might be some technical variances as well, depends on how wants, how somebody wants to look at it.
Existing is 2.8 acres, increasing to 3.8 acres. Lot area minimum is 38, why is it still existing condition?
Is not, eliminated.
Those what should be.
Billy, I know that's correctionally.
And the same with buildable lot area.
Yes.
And we conform to the M1.
Have a look, conform to the M1 requirement.
Somebody's other, other numbers change as well. I mean, the, the, this principal setback side minimum went from 216 to 214. It got smaller, right, 2 feet somehow, in the, in the right configuration. There may, whatever that non-conformity is, it got 2 feet worse. If, and that's also complicated by the fact that it's in two zones. I'm just saying, if I was writing up a resolution, I would write these things up and say there may be variances, but the board can grant them if possible.
Next slide.
Good question though. Would it help in clarity of the resolution, did this chart be redone? Only asking if it might, you thought.
What I, what I was planning, what I was planning to do is to, to, Rob and I meet up after, to just write down conditions that we need to add and redo it. And I intend to revise my review letter to leave some, to reflect some of the new information presented, so that we have something coherent as the next year, if that makes sense.
Okay, I don't need these. These don't have to be changed for me to write up a resolution. If the board were proof of this, I could do it with what we have here. And with Sandcell or Rodcell.
Okay, so this is the stormwater management plan, it's a pivot. This is part of the stormwater management report that shows the existing watershed areas in general. We've got a large portion of this residential for the entire tract that's going to point in Analysis 6. And the northern portion of the site coming down towards, towards Jug Handle. To the northern portion of the site. Then we've got another portion of the site that, the southern portion that this charges to Point of Analysis 3, and that goes off to, that's based on Kane's, Kane's Lane. And so, this reflects existing position. And the proposed condition. Next slide. So, the stormwater management, and this is the proposed position, and we analyzed the commercial portion of the site. Based on the revised grading, we come up with the different watershed areas. The, the engineer has reviewed our report, and we have some subtle revisions to make, but in general, we will comply with all of the requirements that were requested by your engineer. The ultimate, the ultimate focus, however, for stormwater management is to meet the, the DP requirements for water quantity, runoff and water quality. So, for the two-year storm, we have to reduce the runoff by 50 percent. For the 10-year storm, we need to reduce the stormwater by 25 percent, and we do, we do for the two, we do for the 10. We also comply with the 100-year storm reduction of 20 percent. So, the net result is that in, given the existing conditions and the existing runoff of the site, and the proposed condition with all the basins and the infiltration that we're providing on the site, we're retaining it on-site, and we're bleeding it out at a slower rate, and it complies with the DP requirements. Next slide. This is just a slide of the grading plan, and this shows you how the contours from Route 35 were pitched up. Each contour interval represents one foot, and we go up to, from Route 35 up to the retail. And we have contours shown going up, King's, Kings Highway East, and we're also relatively flat going up and then flat out along, going up slightly along King's Lane, and then we have contours that are relatively flat, but we show some undulation along the interconnect road. And this is the wetlands. And what we, we will have testimony by our wetland scientist regarding the wetlands. We have wetlands that were, for the recharge, the existing recharge to those wetlands is going, is supposed to be divided with the roof runoff. And that depicts the grading, the overall grading plan of the site. We've got a land state plan, a land state plan, and we've got comments as well from your, from your engineer, and there are some questions. Specifically, there were some questions we'll comply, we intend to comply with, with most of the comments, we're not done with all of them, but we intend to comply and we'll sit down with your engineer and go over that. But a few of the points that I'd like to clarify, the trees, the tree space along Kane's Lane, we're showing 60 to 70 feet, and that should be cut in half, so we intend to add more trees along Kane's Lane. There were some comments overall internally, and we can also discuss that we are seeking design waivers in terms of the, of the trees and the spacing and the specific requirements that the ordinance has regarding trees per, per the 20 parking spaces. Our, our thought and our experience has been that where you have the bigger tracts of land to supplement, put, put the trees in those areas where they thrive. We do have diamond-shaped islands in the, in the parking field, so, and this, this plan actually, we, we're proposing some additional trees to, to comply with some of the comments that your engineer had. So, we are proposing some changes to the plan, we'll sit down with your engineer and provide those details. But right now, the trees are diamond-shaped islands, and we have structural soil to, to enable those trees to really thrive in a, you know, parking lot environment. That's typically the challenge, is to get them to thrive. So, that's what I'm going to do. We do have the review letters, comment letters. Would like to go through, just very briefly, for the most part, we intend to comply with the comments. I just would like to point out.
One, one comment by me. We have A1, so we have, the board has this set of color numbers, and you stopped when you got to the architectural section?
Yes.
So, as of the time, it's only the sheets that Mr. Fittelman talked about, the rest of those documents are going to have to wait for the architect to go through them, and they're not in the record. Like, most of A1's in the record for that last section, I'm assuming the rest of these are all architectural plans. So, that's going to have to wait for the architect to talk, that's part of the record.
So, I have before me the planning board engineer's concrete review letter, and I also have the concrete planners' review letter. And we also received a letter from the Department of Public Works. And I will just point out a few, in general, as I mentioned, we work to comply with the comments.
I'm sorry, it's weird. Sorry, nobody.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll speak louder. In general, which letter are you referring to specifically? In general, we will comply with the, the majority of the comments in all three letters, specifically though I'm referring to the engineer's review letter.
Generally, the.
No, no, I'll, I'll articulate where we.
The easy way to go through these is if there's an item on this letter, you agree with, you know, and discuss it. You're going to say, I agree fully with the 2, 3, 4, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
And then discuss the ones that Mr. Katie has a problem with, or you have a problem with.
Okay, fair enough. So, for the, for item D, D is off-track or off-site improvements. Comment number one is that the plan shall be revised, provide sidewalk along the western side of the interconnect road. Currently, we're showing sidewalk on the eastern side of the interconnect road, which is the portion of the road that's adjacent to the residential. And we have, so the pedestrian circulation is such that we have crosswalks clearly defined, and those crosswalks correspond to entrance points for pedestrians to our center. And so, we don't envision that the pedestrian circulation is going to take place in this movement from left to right, or north to south along the roadway. If that movement was, is necessary by pedestrians, they would do that on this side of the road, this being the residential, and their crossings would be a key. this being the residential, and their crossings would be a key entry points into the commercial lot. So for that reason, we're asking for relief from that.
Is that a waiver requirement, design requirement suggested?
Well, that's complex and complicated, because in the GPD requirements, there's reference to the master plan and reexamination report, which talk about complete streets, to talk about the interconnect road. So they'd have to give much more information on how they can satisfy those requirements without providing a sidewalk.
What about the school, school bus areas? I mean, we're talking about phase two, but school buses will be running up and down that road. We have to consider that for safety reasons, contiguous sidewalk over there.
Mr. Keating's point is a good one. In fact, if the, if the absentee, in fact, only proposing sidewalks that would further the developments only, I think it would be detrimental to the municipality if you're not, if you're, if you're creating a roadway as an interconnect, and you're only, you're only placing sidewalks to serve the developments or contiguous developments, that's not the intent of the ordinance when you have to create a road. So I think, whatever you think.
Our chat consultant will address that issue specifically, Mr. Chairman. With respect to comment number, comment number two, the application shall begin, the plan, the interconnect road is private, will be utilized by the public in access. He's been, he did show that as public access, he's been, so we comply. This one I shouldn't have talked about, because we comply. Now, response number, response number seven, or comment number seven, King's Highway East is designated scenic corridor. The township master plan, the application right testimony, have the scenic corridor is being proposed to be maintained in accordance with the GPD approval, and further township planner for further comment. So we have, we have done the significant amount of landscaping along the eastern King's Highway East. We've provided and tried to maintain as much of existing trees as we can, which, which are to the south of the northeast corner by the, by the movie theater is where we're proposing to have existing trees maintained, and we're supplementing that with the street trees. So I'm not sure what further considerations are needed.
Perhaps to be helpful to the board, there's reference to the landscaping plan versus a grading plan, so that the board could see what is being proposed and have an understanding of what, whether this meets the scenic corridor requirements or not.
And we have, and we have, we really, what I find difficult right now is we spoke about the subdivision. We have a lot of questions about that which haven't been addressed, and we're jumping to the landscaping plan, which is fine, but we have a lot of comments where we're asking about it, just that this, that, that our landscaping provides it, you know, I don't know if it addresses our comments, if that makes sense. You know, just that, oh, it's providing, you know, this landscaping is providing. How, where? Which, because we have, we have had an environmental pool session about, about the scenic corridor and reported to our landscaping comments as well. So I don't know, just saying, oh, we're providing it, I don't know if that satisfies our queries.
I gotta tell you, I don't want to expand on our planners' comments. This is the council, sorry, this is to the council. You know, when I ask a question with regard to the sidewalks that you're here, you come back to me, you tell me, look, the your traffic engineers have printed up, that means that I have to remember to ask the question again. I'll, I'll remember, trust me.
I'll remember as well.
I don't want to do that, though. So if you have someone that's, that's providing testimony to our, to our engineer's letter, and the answer to the question is going to shift to another, another witness, frankly, I think, I think you revisit that particular point on the engineer's letter with that other witness, but you do it in a, you do it in a different fashion. I'm kind of bothered by that.
Pull it dress it. I will not forget. Pull, pull it dress it head on. There's tremendous overlap with our witnesses.
No, no, I get that. I understand that. I'm saying to you, look, it's up to you now as to how you want to, how you want to put forth your application, but I gotta go back and track that said. I'll do it, and I get, but you're going to continue to do this with other comments, and I, I'm not going to tell you how to stand that through your application, but.
We will try to minimize that. Understood.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Of course.
Usually the witness addresses Mr. Keating's letters, the engineer, not the engineer, but the architect, planner, sign, otherwise we won't be able to address the key for this letter more times. Overhoped.
We'll try to minimize it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Leaping number seven, are you going?
Yes, sir. Going to comment, comment number 15, regarding the proposed bus stop. A bus, there was a comment that the bus shelter, as shown, it does not appear that a bus shelter will be idiot compliant. We defer further to review from the, from the DOT. We agree, we'll assign that review to the DOT, but at this point, the bus shelter is proposed, bus shelter per se. Bus stop, yes.
Is no bus shelter?
Correct.
Just a bus shelter, about 35 years, stormwater needs it for.
Yes, I believe it says bus stop, not shelter.
Because we had made a comment that it's on the sidewalk.
Correct.
I think it says bus shelter.
And again, that's the DOT's jurisdiction, so ultimately, we'll, we'll get some comments from that.
So it's just sidewalk, and it's going to be identified as a bus stop, not shelter, what are you saying?
At this point, yes, as was proposed.
Which means there'll be no structure there, right? And just the sound that says bus stop.
So the plan says.
Is that true?
Correct, bus stop. Again, I, I don't want to offend you, but that, that comment probably was best responded to by a traffic engineer who's dealing with the DOT on a daily basis, so I, I will, I will pass those comments up and wait for a traffic engineer to respond to those specific DOT-related proposals.
Is the board allowed to make a suggestion on that? I mean, you have, we tell spaces where you're going to have young people, whatever, people working part-time, maybe they don't have transportation, and they're trying to get there to this facility. Do we have any?
What do you, do you mean, can we ask for a bus shelter?
Yes.
I would think so. It's not part of the road basis, because if the, if the board thought that a bus shelter there would be appropriate, you say you want a bus shelter, and there's, I can't imagine if the, if he would say no to that. I don't even know if they would have jurisdiction or, obviously.
It could turn into transit jurisdiction, probably because they'd be the ones that are utilizing the bus shelter and buying it as part of their guideline.
They don't need to.
So we can make an adaptation to?
At 7:00 at night, without having, you know, access to the library in front of me, I think you could, you could make it, say you want a bus shelter. Let's, let's take a moment. How much more testimony do you have?
Possibly 30 minutes to go through the letters.
I'm asking a question because normally we go till 10. Stop it just in front of that, because if we're going to go through, say, 11, you have to make that decision right here and now. Now, the other factor is if you've got 30 minutes, that's 30 minutes if you're talking without one of us interrupting.
Sure.
Yeah. Because then, my other side here, after the board's all done, you have 30 minutes, and now we're going to get up to 12.
Understood.
Do I, where do we just carry this so that we can continue your testimony, pick up on your testimony at the next meeting, and then allow, so we, there's a smooth transition, not only from the board, but to the public here, if he is, okay, yeah, I will answer this or that or whatever.
Of course, any comment.
That said, the comments on the board?
No.
Standing until 11:00 or not?
With regard to this, this witness, you're done with your, you are or you're not done with your testimony?
He's not.
You have to look at the comments.
No, he's thinking he's got at least 30 minutes, or 30 minutes, without us interrupting. And puts us at 10:30 by the time we're really done in the public. We're not going to fit that.
Make a motion. Make a motion.
The problem is, and to escape testimony that the public here, I suspect may have been a pressure today that they would have at the next meeting, but we're not done with your testimony.
So, that's.
Mr. Chairman?
What's your?
I think we may have.
When would the next hearing be?
What would be?
Is there, is there an opportunity for a special hearing, or is that not?
That's exactly what we're going to propose to, is that we move to the next hearing, where you would be actually the only one, you know, which would be the June 15th meeting. And if we pick up there, that's two weeks from now, if we pick up there with this testimony and into your architect and his set.
With copy.
You, you get, the thought process is we give you the full four hours, if you will, of the night.
We appreciate that.
And now, that's the good news. The bad news is we've got five other applications backed up. You are then going to get bumped to the August meeting. You won't get heard in the July meeting, and I'm not going to have a special meeting in July because the board members have a vacation, and everything else, so we don't want to. So, like I said, I think we can also, at the, at the June 15th meeting, if there's stuff that you have to react to, now you've got a full 30-plus days to take care of it, get the plans back to the planner. I think it, I think it works fairly well.
It does work, Mr. Chairman. That works fine.
Okay, okay. Well, in that case, then, we're not going to go until 11:00. It'd be easy for you. So we will continue this, with this testimony to June 15th.
6:30?
Same location, 6:30, yes.
Without, without further ado.
No, do we have yet?
We, we have a formality here that, that meeting doesn't exist yet, so we need to do a few things for that, but anyway. So here's what I would suggest. First, we need, procedurally, we need a motion to call a special meeting on June 15th at 6:30.
And we have enough days?
Room is available, sorry. We're ready, yes.
And we have enough days between now and the 15th? We meet everything as far as timeline, criteria of county date now, everything?
Yes. Okay, we're refined on the time. The board chooses to have a meeting on June 15th. Procedurally refined. We have to do some little things to do it, but we're okay. So the, but I think the first thing would be, before you carry it, a meeting doesn't exist, first please have a motion to create the meeting. So making a motion to have a, we're established in June 15th special plan, procedural here, normal time. Second? Either way, you can, you can do one. Are you one of the vocal?
Well, they can, so can I.
Okay, you can have it. Any votes? No, okay.
Yes.
Now, you need to, just basically, from the chair, you could carry this to the June 15th meeting, and just raise those, that is now there, for the public and everyone else's application. Carry this application to June 15th meeting, 6:30, right here. And see, you've got a question.
Yes, just a quick question, because obviously, this witness has presented a lot of information, so without the ability to ask questions from the public now, I understand, because we need to take it to the next meeting, will the transcript of this meeting be made available to the public so that we have that information? Obviously, between now and June 15th meeting, a lot of time, and our questions are going to get lost, so it's not necessarily fair for us to just expect that the next meeting, we rehash everything.
Well, you, you'll be permitted to, any testimony that was given tonight, you'll be permitted, when the witness is complete, to pose questions with regard to tonight's testimony and any future testimony. My, my only concern is that I want to make certain that it's, it's fresh enough for you to remember to ask that question.
Exactly, which is why I'm asking.
And I'm going to do that question through the chair when it's proposed to the House.
We have an audio recording.
So will, will that recording be available?
Sure.
Oprah.
There's no court reporter here, so there is nobody who's going to be typing this up into the transcript between now and June 15th. Okay. The record exists electronically on our reporting information, and typically, if you were to ask, typically, if you were to ask for a copy, you would have to file an Oprah request, and then there'd be timeframes or whatever. I think the, the understanding with the short timeframe in between, if you ask for a copy of, we can burn discs of this, right there. And we converted this, I think it's a dollar, the charge for the disc, and you can, you can get the disc if you ask, if you fold the euro up and ask for a copy of it. You may have to technically, because the clerk under open public records act may require an Oprah request for it, you fill it out, you'll get a disc.
Okay. So do I make it on the site?
No, you can just see the video on the slate.
Oh, you want the video? That's, you use.
No, no. He provided me with this card. I'm just trying to figure out where collectively the public can get this information.
He, he is an independent video person. If you want, if you want a copy of the disc that's being recorded for the board's purposes, ask, you may have to fill out an Oprah request, but you'll get plenty of time recognizing the urgency and the timeframe you're dealing with, you can get, you can get a disc.
Okay. Well, just an audio recorder.
Yeah, if, if an audio or video is the best we can get, and clearly, the transcript would be great, obviously, that's not.
Let me, let me, let me, let me give you one, one caution with regard to this. As Mr. Gore mentioned, the, any requests by the, through the township, we will give you an official document. Any other document that you get, I want to make certain that you only reference official documents that you got with regard to testimony.
Okay. So with regards to the next time, will it also be understood that, give us a brief summary of the commentary that was delivered tonight, or should we not, start that, start from where he left off?
We'll start starting where we left off.
That's right.
Or to finish, we have.
Extension of time? Through, yes, through what date?
Yeah, I think for, I mean, let's, you know, let's, let's face the facts. I think you have to extend through the August meeting, because otherwise, we're going to have to ask you again, so. The August meeting being, August 5th?
Agreed.
August agreed. That acceptable extension through August 3rd?
Yes.
And then second, it's May, it's a special meeting.
I understand. As usual.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Make a motion.
Is there still a June 15th meeting? Yes.
June 15th.
Is the next meeting? Thanks.
Yes.